Hey everybody, welcome to a poker coaching study session. We're going to study cash games and we're going to see everyone's cards and see how our opponents really play on ignition. And we are playing the fifty dollar uh NL fifty. Uh we're playing six handed and the thing we've noticed is that the players at the nine handed games worse than the players at the six handed game sometimes. Let's find out. All right, this seems like an easy hand. Villain one raises and everyone folds. And he raises to two point three perfectly reasonable signs. Here we go. Why are you not dealing? Why are you? Oh, that's why. Because this because this control is covering the buttons. There we go. Next hand. Um Jack queen can raise certainly. King jack suited should three bet him. If the queen jack doesn't raise, the king ten will and king jack suited should three bet him. Either way, I should be three betting. There's the raise. There's the three bet and everything happens normally.
Good sizing.
Thank you. This is a this is a more recent game. You're going to see more GTA. You're going to see more GTA wizard sizes here. All right. Fives can raise, fives can also fold. I wouldn't be surprised to see fives limp. In these games, uh he's got a broken stack, uh which probably means is he gonna is he gonna limp and set mine? We'll see. And if he raises, he should just take this. Nope, there's the limp like we expected. This limp might bring in villain five.
Nope. That's a lot of other small pairs that they limp.
Yep, a lot of that. Yep, we're going to fold. Jack eight suited now gets in for a good price and four nine sees the flop with plenty of equity. There we go. That's eighteen percent free equity. All right, and hits the wrong part of it. Check, check, bet tiny bet keeps the four nine in for at least one bet. There we go. And that's why you don't do play like that. Uh his nine is still it's top pair, but it's not a very good hand. There's no reason to bet this. I don't think I think he goes for the I think he's continuing.
I think you can protect that.
Yeah, yep.
All that.
Against that tiny bet there, that doesn't feel like a seven. The nine is probably the best hand. And he just calls and I don't hate that. And the flush comes in, probably going to go check, check on the river. Nope. He continues the one big blind bet, just guaranteed to lose one big blind imposition for no.
Have our mark.
Yeah, there is no reason for that last bet. What's he doing? Trying to get value from aces that floated and thinks he's going to get one more big blind from him?
It's excellent.
Yeah, yep.
It's a very thin bit. I mean, yeah, it's not not.
It's gonna get, I mean, a four, I guess a four can call him all the way.
Yeah, only nine. Yeah, you lose to nine and uh big pair, the big pair should raise a pre flop shot.
I think we're probably.
You lose to the flush draw that um if the guy should be on and you lose to a re and you give money to a really weird seven.
Yeah, it's a very strategic stretch to say that this five five that open lint is making a good play with this one big one in position.
Right. I wouldn't mind it out of position as a block bet.
Yeah, out of position is a different story in position.
I just think he threw away a blind and he also gave a chance to induce something that I don't think he wanted to induce.
That is making his mind is betting for value.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. All right.
I understand that. Put it that way. It's not good.
Not good. All right. Did I just go the wrong way? Set down? Yep, this is the right way. Okay, yeah. Um king ten can be opening sometimes. Um if he does the ace, my ace jack. I guess I can three bet there more like ace queen definitely three betting it ace jack against the low jack seems I think that's borderline. We can look that up. Um everybody else should fold. The king ten, but the king ten, oh, he folds. Okay, so raise and take it. There we go.
Yeah, I think king ten is fold in NL fifty in UTG.
Yeah, there's um I it I thought I remember it mixing in poker coaching. Let's see what it does in GTO wizard. Let's see what the wizard does. Here we go. This is okay, change cash six max. GTO NL fifty. Let's do that one. Low jack. Yeah, it's it mixes.
Yes.
It's got some.
And then and then he raises, I think, cut off, folds ace jack. Let's check that just to confirm.
Yeah. Yep, right there at the ace queen. You knew it was there. If you stretched to ace jack, I don't think he would be killing yourself.
No.
I don't think it'd be value owning yourself or anything. Don't need to do it. All right. Eight's raise and take it. Uh but with that sizing, he does not raise and take it. And that's okay. You don't mind being against a jack three suited. And the ten six wisely gets out of the way. Okay. The bet size is forty percent uh no, that size is uh.
Thirty three.
Twenty, yeah. Yep, there we go. There, jack three should absolutely not fold. Check raise.
Uh maybe check shove it with that.
At twenty six, yeah. Yeah, not bad. The guy's got a lot. The guy never villain.
Only has ace five suited.
We've got fives and he's only going to call with his pairs and you've still got good equity against those. Yeah. Nope. I don't hate this, but I like I like I like seeing the check shove at twenty five. I don't think I like it at a hundred.
No, I don't. I'm sure not.
Yeah, or even check. Check rate. Would you do what kind of what do you think about a check raise at a hundred here?
Uh well, let's think about what well, you wouldn't if you were playing a full check, you wouldn't have this combo.
Yeah.
But you'd have jack ten suited and since the five.
Jack eight suited.
UTG except for four combos of ace five suited. I think it's a really good XR.
And he's only got two combos of ace five suited.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah. And so, yeah, against his pocket pairs, you're not bad. And against everything else, there's a lot of folding there.
Depends on how big you raise.
Okay. That's a half pot bet there and the twenty five. He can call a half pot bet here. No problem. He's getting the direct outs odds.
You can go all in now.
Yeah, you could go all in with a pair.
At least the film didn't.
Pair plus draw.
Yeah, yeah, pair plus flush draw one card to go.
I don't think this guy's gonna I think you guys are gonna call.
I'll just try to get there like that. Now.
How does it?
Always find this hard. I always feel like I'm just turning my hand face up. And I guess the idea is you just gotta bluff the ace of clubs more often.
That's the reason you check raise a lot of your hands.
Yeah.
For sure.
So so if the eights have any anywhere with all, they're going to check behind if checked to.
So the jack. Real question is if he can justify a call with his flush blocker. Maybe on the paired board.
Yeah, not supposed to hit him, so.
Yeah.
More than it is also true. I'm good.
All right. Let's see what he does. He checks. All right. Come on villain five, you've played this hand perfectly. Good for you.
That's fault.
No. Check, 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 check.
Checking it.
So uh yeah, just see it.
Ace is to a bad fault, I think. If you have a greens or something like that, might bad faulty.
So when we're when we're in villain three's seat with it with put us in the big blind rather than the small blind so we can play a hand like this and and up the kicker from the three to an eight so we can get in this this silly hand. We have to bet pot on the river. I don't know why we're on a broken stack, but we have a broken stack. Um maybe it happened last hand or you know, I don't know why. We have to bet the river, right? And to balance that, we have to bluff with the ace of clubs that somehow we're there for, right?
Yeah, do you want to run it?
I know because it's someone's name that we have to make. We can if you want to, but I my my feeling is this so he's done so much wrong before this that we're playing a total.
Yeah, we're a weird part of the tree.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna yeah, we're gonna adjust everything away.
Yeah, I mean, he doesn't like his yeah shack three because it's a paired board and because he's got a jack three flush check I flush against UTG. So he's happy to check it down, I would guess.
I would think I thought he was going for check raise.
Yeah.
That's what I think he was doing, but we'll never know.
I hope that villain still bet.
Queen eight suited in the hijack fold, queen eight suited in the cutoff. That's a no, that's openable.
Yeah, that's that's cusp, but it's openable.
I think.
And then the ace jack.
I think hijack opens queen eight suited.
Yeah, I can also open queen eight suited, yeah.
Let's take a look at that now. Uh on the wizard hijack, queen eight suited. Yep, you're right. All right. And then here, not even cuspy on the on the wizard.
Yeah, poker coaching is a little tighter here.
Yeah, yeah, that I I was remembering. I'm I'm learning the hijack. I'm learning the.
Yeah, there's a two point five open. If you go for the two open and uh.
Yeah, then you're all over it. Okay. And then the uh the ace jack to three bet it uh should be an ace queen. So just let it go from the ace jack. I don't say that that's what's gonna happen, but that seems like it. All right. So I fold the first queen eight folds. Here's a nice normal raise. The ace jack folds right and the sixes just just call play along. Let's see what happens. Full stacks, everything's normal. Everybody played right. Um villain ones fold is you know, not terrible to to not fold to to fold something on the cusp like that.
Yeah, can you bet big on this board? I think so.
All right. Yeah, ignore that. So yeah, so from the big blind, our analysis is simple. Check range on this board. It's not a donk board, so doesn't matter what we have. He checks. Good villain without considering his hands should look at the board and decide if it's a check, a big better, a small bet board and two.
Yeah.
Two Broadway cards. This is um that's fine. No locked up equity. Yeah, draw heavy. Yeah, let's bet big. Now we look at our hand. Is it? Does it fit in a bet big category? Yes, it's a draw perfectly reasonable draw. Bet big and big in this case is three and a half big blinds, four big blinds. Anything in that range. And he does the half pot, just under half. It's I'm sure it's got some of that too. It's just you can bet big and this should put the sixes in an uncomfortable situation. Um and.
As a club starts the call.
Yeah, I think you're supposed to continue here with the club.
Yeah, yeah, it's 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 uncomfortable and you're just supposed to lose more money. And if the guy plays well, you're gonna lose to his draws also because he's not gonna.
Too clean out.
But then there's that.
And I say, ah, clean eight.
We've identified our first red liner. Let's keep an eye on villains five.
Yeah.
On our our first what?
Uh red liner. So someone who is.
Red liner. Yeah.
Yeah. Are you familiar with that term?
Now.
Yeah, I just I didn't hear what you said.
I'd never heard it before, but it is self explanatory.
I'm an anti red liner.
I love the red line. Um for those of you, since people are on YouTube, if you don't know what a red liner is, get Poker Tracker four. Okay. Red line is in Poker Tracker four and probably also in Hold the Manager, but I don't know this is you can display a graph like this. Go, we will display a graph like this. Stats, graphs. Now while it loads, that will show you not just your winnings, but it will show you how you won them. We'll come back and we'll look at that all populates. It's gonna be a big graph because it's my whole thing. All right, we'll come back to that. Um queen eight is very unhappy and at that size with no club, maybe throws away his equity because that because the dirty straight out.
It's all equity, if you might have come also, you're not.
Just gotta fold.
It's not the top straight.
Yeah, I think he's just gotta fold. But I I don't think these six, this is approved solver approved by the sixes, but good for him. Anybody want? We want to look? We want to move on with our lives.
Oh, yeah, we it's up to you. What do you want to do?
Yeah, let's look at this one. Let's look at that one. And while you're setting that up, here's what here's what it looks like. So this is my cash database here in big blinds. And my actual winnings are right here in the green line. And what it tells you, what the lines here show you is if there was any justice in the world, I would be up here. Because the yellow line is your all in equity and it just turns out that when we were all in, I lost some flips.
It depends on how many multi way pots there are. Be careful with what you say.
Oh, really? Oh, and under multi way. Tell me, tell me about that.
Uh in heads up, all in adjusted is a correct parameter, but if it's a multi way pot, it's not.
Oh, okay.
I believe so at least. I think I heard something like that, so.
Good enough. So but still, I'm just gonna say if there were any justice in the world, I would be up here with twice the winnings that I don't have. Um the red line are the hands you won without showdown. So as you can see here, I'm an aggressive little monkey. And you can.
Yeah, nice red line.
And you can see that I call too much.
Now, if you're too aggressive and you get called out sometimes, then you lose.
Yep, anyway, yeah.
You want to take a look?
I'm aggressive. Yes, let's take a look. I mean, I'm not Nick aggressive, but.
Can also be very passive and all players know. So if you bet a fault.
Yeah.
You guys see?
I don't think I'm very passive. Yes.
All right, I move some of these. Um, all right, so.
There's a check. There's the check range that we thought.
Yeah, check range to this. Yeah, so cutoff has got, we're wondering about size. So cutoff has got a really nice range advantage. Imposition's got a nice range advantage here.
Yeah.
So that is gonna, I think, pushes towards uh that's long frequently, but I could be wrong. Let's find out.
And I think it might be bet large frequently. Let's find out.
I think in between.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's mixing, but you're right. It's mostly B fifty. So he found the right sizing.
Um, so it's definitely a large bet board, meaning it has lots of large bets on it and that's good. And they were in the same not over bets.
His combo um has got, it's mostly B seventy five and.
Yeah.
But he's got B fifty, which makes sense.
Right.
Um.
And he thirty three'd it if I remember.
No, he half potted.
Yeah.
He fifty. Oh, right. He's just under half potted it. Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, we're betting across our entire range, except for this middle area.
Yeah.
Where we've got some showdown stuff like second pair.
Yeah.
Yeah, second pair is checking back a lot as we would expect. So here comes the real question. Um where does does villain have check raises when we be fifty? So cut off be fifty.
Oh, yes.
And actually, not many. I mean, so usually you're gonna see around.
Yeah.
Fifteen percent. So we're like, I don't know, nine percent here. Uh, he's never doing it with his combo.
Right.
Ten percent.
And his sixes, you need a club to continue on. If you have both of them, you have to continue on.
Yeah, yeah, so it's mixed.
With youristic and.
So, yeah, it'd be interesting to watch this guy.
Yeah.
Because you know, my theory is that there's a lot of red line players in the pool. I think it's true. And we'll see if he continues his aggression.
Right, okay, cool.
Uh, let's just look at where his check raises are coming from.
Right.
So he's almost pure with his with his check races that are unblocking continues. Notice he the ten, which I guess is going to be a big part of uh which is blocking a lot of continues for
right.
Imposition, he's he's so playing with these twos, which he's unblocking continues. Check raising pure and then what? And then he just doesn't. He has a smattering of bluffs like the most. Maybe this is an interesting one. So that makes sense. So backdoor. Backdoor open ender. Straight draw.
And he can, and if he gets re raised on that check raise, he can probably call.
Yeah, yeah, let's go look at. I think he's gonna do it pure yet. He's not even doing sure with the
with the club.
With the front door, front door.
Yeah.
The combo draw. But yeah, so that's, I mean, this one I'm finding these other ones. Not so much like it's our it's our weird. This has got a lot of applied on this one.
There's your killer one.
Well, yeah.
The nine seven.
That's also unusual.
Backdoor to a backdoor and a gutter.
Yeah, that's nice. What's that?
Shall we hand it back to you, boss?
In one second, what what I want to see that the one that we never do, the the one bluff that's up there, the next bluff uh from the bottom. Want to see what that one is? Is that? Oh, that's our queen eight.
That's yeah. So that so if he had imposition to hand, he would get to do a lot of this.
Okay.
For some of this, but he's never folding, it looks like.
Yeah.
Too many implied odds. So it's always interesting for me to look at this. Let's see if he will look at this real quick. I'm curious. Yeah, it's it's zero EV rather. Um, okay. I'm gonna hand it back to you.
Good, okay. That looks good. Um, let's go back to this. Yeah. And so what we thought of the play makes sense and oh, we didn't see whether the queen eight is the queen eight in instant fold on that.
That was, yeah, it's a good question. Do you want to look?
Yeah, of course it is. But let's see what we let's see what we need for it. Like if we had the queen of hearts.
What size did he use for his check? His XR?
Uh, he check raised two to nine, which is
uh almost.
Yeah.
All right, all right. Um.
Sure, let me cancel. Let me cancel my my shift.
Nine BB or something like that, yeah.
All right, so strategy. Let's uh you wanted to check raised this eight or twelve?
Eight, eight.
Both. Oh, yeah, eight's closest, I guess, but we can see how much it falls off.
Right, yeah.
Um, so his queen eight is continuing with the backdoor and front door. So
so good for.
Arguably, it's continuous with EV of this continuing. It's obviously gonna be a lot bigger with the front door.
Yeah.
So queen eight is call is worth half a chip. And then, yeah, you're always continuing here. I don't mind his fold with his queen eight because.
Yeah, he doesn't have it.
Because population does not have as many check raise buffs as this guy. I mean, this guy's making a total nonsense check raise buff, so.
It wasn't the backdoor, that's how.
Yeah.
If you look at the breakdown, it's super linear. I mean, he's got he's he's got re raises throughout his uh
Yeah.
throughout his range and then his very best are going to say, okay, let's go with it.
Yeah.
Cause I'm unblocking all your continues.
Right, and let's rock and let's rock against your flush draw.
Yeah, exactly. Let's get it in against your flush draw, which I'm gonna give pot odds. It's gonna have to continue.
Yeah.
All right, man, I'll pass it back to you unless you guys want to see anything else.
Nope, that was good. This guy folded the right. He had the combo. He had the our guy had the combo to fold the uh the neither the front door nor the back door. So not a bad place to bluff. Like he chose the wrong hand to bluff with, but.
Quite interested to watch villain six.
Yeah.
Or villain five rather. Let's see if he continues this.
See what happens. Okay, uh, jack queen, that is a mandatory raise from that position. And should and folds to me and I should defend my my ten jack. And so there's the raise and this is a call. And I am dominated and I am beat and I am folding. Oh, you, you're adorable.
Yeah, that ten jack ten off is uh, I don't know, is that that's what you you were saying like that's a mandatory defend. I don't know that I would.
You don't think so? Okay, against the hijack.
Close indeed against hijack. Maybe even the fold.
Let's see how bad do I play? Hijack raises, big blind. Okay, that is a fold.
There's a little sliver.
It's a sliver. That is it. That is that is mandatory if you want to play wrong.
Cusp.
But let's let us let's uh.
Are you called?
Yeah, check, check. I didn't call. When check, check. So now let's extend the mistake. And now, how bad do I want to extend this mistake? Nope, I just give up and say I give up and I give him an ace.
I don't know. I don't think you I think you should have followed through, but I don't think your turn bet was bad.
Yeah, we'll find out. Since this this hand is playable, we're gonna look at this one. Um, I think what I did, my my thought was, okay, you you don't have it. I'm gonna bet it, but of the of your continue hands, lots of them have aces in it and I don't want to represent what you have. So that's I don't say that's good play.
Right. No, you're right. I think that you're right. The river could be just to just give it up there. It's kind of bad for.
Yeah.
Not bad for both players, really.
I think that you've got some ace X flat there.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, so.
The bears also. I'm sorry, you can bluff.
Oh, sure.
Mike, do you want to ride this one? Or I can do it. I don't mind.
Uh, if you got it ready to go, I haven't. I don't have mine up.
Sure.
All right.
Um.
You know, did you need to see it again? Did I get off there too fast?
No, I got it.
Okay, good.
So UTG raises, big blind calls, right?
Uh, hijack raise.
Uh, you're not gonna have this combo, so it's gonna make it tough to do it.
Well, I can have a king. I I there was there was a sliver of jack ten off suit calling. Um, I don't have it.
It's on the sim. Some sims it isn't turned and some sims.
Well, I'm if you go to. I'm running. I'll maybe I'll change this to a different. I'll go to two point five X. Maybe you have it there.
All right.
Stacks a hundred big blinds.
Yeah, and he raised the two point five X, so we'll have the exact world.
Cash. He raised a two point five?
Yeah. He raised two point five from the hijack.
Was it queen five four?
You've got some slivers now. I changed the settings.
Three, queen five three rainbow.
Break NL fifty stacks a hundred.
Share the screen while you're doing this that way. Just if anybody's watching who wants to see how you set these things up.
Sure.
Also, it's just more interesting than seeing our app.
There you go. So.
Okay.
Um.
Open size two point five.
He's gonna do an oh, yeah.
Hundred, hundred bet sizes general GTO NL fifty.
And NL fifty two point five.
Two point five.
Yeah. Change that. There we go. All right.
Uh hijack raises.
Yep. Hijack.
Yeah.
Opens.
We got, we have slivers, so. You want to tell me the flop?
Queen five three rainbow.
All right, I'm OCD, so I'm gonna queen of hearts.
Five of spades.
Space, three of diamonds.
Yes. There we go.
All right, pure check on your part.
Yep. Oh, look at that. That board is not a pure check. That board does have some donking, very little. And I think it's perfectly fine to not learn any of it.
Well, now I'm gonna now I'm curious about how this breaks down. So you've got a you've got a nut advantage, I guess.
Yeah, and so that just gives us a little. Yeah.
Cause you got fives and threes he doesn't have.
Yep.
So.
And I don't know that we have a nut advantage there, by the way. We have, but he doesn't have a nut advantage. Meaning we run cross and then it recrossed again. So I'm not sure that we that we technically have the nut advantage, but we he 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 doesn't.
And yeah, I mean, it was kind of a simplification, but
Yeah.
I mean, if we dig down a little bit, we'll go handset. You've got, you know, twice as many, almost twice as many sets.
That's I've got the two pairs he doesn't have.
Yeah.
But and then he's got queens that I don't. So he and then at the very top, he gets a set over set.
So uh what size did he use?
He used, he used, he checked, check.
Oh, that's right. Check, check.
Let's see with, let's see his check and so we checked and on against his range, does he, does he ever check that queen jack?
Yeah, he did like fifty percent of it.
To experience. We'll go back and look.
Yeah. Fifty.
So he's supposed to, he's got lots of checks in his
Look at it, look at it.
Range, he gets the cause queen jack. Let's go look at how much he's checking his top pair across the entire. So his top pair, which is right here. He's got check mixing in all or all through his.
Yep.
Range.
Yeah.
Which is something I'm adding. What I've noticed is that I've added this. Which is something I'm adding, what I've noticed is that I've added this to my game. Especially this, this board is, does not require any protection, right?
No.
I mean, he could have four, six, but relatively, this is a dry board.
Yeah.
Um, and so, that's gonna increase our checking frequency, and. People. At lower stakes do not react well, but this is my experience, they just, some of them will go for it, right? Yes.
Exactly.
And so. And so, and I mean, I think it's a fine exploit, what they're doing, cause they're. Assuming pull is not protecting their checking range, which was what this guy's doing.
Yeah.
Um. So it's good play.
Yeah.
Uh, that he makes, I think.
Right.
And, yeah, so he checks.
Yeah, so here's where I think you're gonna get to kind of hammer him.
Alright. Big blind.
And let's see if, how you react to that.
I bet.
Go, go back to big one, you're on hijack right now.
Oops, you're right, sorry.
One. I don't bet.
No, you're a little bit too far down range.
I am, hold on, hold on, hold on.
That doesn't make much sense because.
You should overbet, uh, on this board.
Spade club, come on, spade club, go back to the jack ten. We're gonna rescue this thing. Spade club.
Yeah, there is a sliver. But I'm a bit very smaller.
Yeah. Alright.
Let's see what, let's just look at where. Your, so your plus, so on top of range, obviously. I mean, essentially, my takeaway from this is that you do get. Some small bets. But you're polarized, right, you either B thirty three. Or you're going with really big, which hardly anybody's finding.
Yeah.
And so you're matching your, the best hands you have, and this is gonna probably be like. Your sets, right?
Right.
And your top, your top, top.
Yeah.
Your top, top blocking continues.
Yes, right.
And, yeah, and you're. And now this is set. And yeah, your straights. Straights are slow playing a lot.
Yeah.
The top of range, but yeah, they're going big, so you gotta have it. And then, this big ridiculous two fifty size.
Mm-hmm.
Is gonna be matched. Cause. Our sizing is, of our blusses are gonna largely mimic value, so.
Yeah.
So then you get. All these gut shot stuff.
Yeah. And huge. Right, so this isn't, this big bet isn't even one twenty five, this is one seventy five. And two fifty, these are.
Yeah, likes a one, it likes these big bets, it likes to polarize. Like a boss on this, and I guess it comes from the fact that. We probably have more straights.
Yeah.
We have more wheels, and, um.
Uh, wheels, I don't think so, we have six four suited.
Why don't we have wheels, Yokes?
No, not more than hijack, I mean, hijack's opening ace for suited.
Right, we both have the ace four, but we have the six four that he doesn't.
Yeah. Well, regardless, we've got more straights, which allows us to. We've got more straights, so we are allowed to do this more.
Have the better strat.
And our all, our extra straights are all the nuts.
Yeah. So.
Right, so.
Do you want to go on? So.
Yes, so we bet.
So what size did you use?
Seventy five.
There's almost nothing, yes, three point two chance.
Okay, let's see how much your range is using this sizing. So yeah, you, you get this a little bit through, like.
What, with my jack?
Top, the kicker is using this.
Jack ten suited.
Thanks for some.
Yeah, I think your, I think your head was in the right place, Scotty, I think your head was in the right place, you, you felt like there were gonna be some big bets here, you just didn't.
Right, I just didn't know, I just didn't know what big meant.
Right.
Oh, he calls, right?
Yeah, he calls.
What's he supposed to do with his top pair? He's supposed to, I'll just focus on top pair real quick here, guys. Yeah, he's just pure calling on his top pair, and I guess it's because the straight's available.
Yeah, he's just supposed to play it correctly against me. Like he did.
And, um. His straights are slow playing a lot.
Mm-hmm.
What about his straight?
Yeah, in position versus a big bet, yeah, you're gonna call a lot.
And the interesting part is that he's slow playing at a higher frequency. Um, with his.
With spades.
Made straight and his flush draw. So, uh, he bets, and then he calls. And, and this is a four of clubs.
Four of clubs, yes it is.
Now, do you, what part of your range now? Puts down the hammer. And this is you, and. You're bottom of range, yeah, so you just gotta. Pump it in, dude.
Alright, let's see that jack, there's the, is the jack ten in there, or is that one?
No, it's not.
I doubt it, cause I don't think you're even getting.
Gives up, and the jack ten is the give up.
Well, jack ten suited just give up because.
Cause it's.
It, it's blocking what you want him to fold, right, it's blocking.
The spades are generally, all the others are.
Eristic is that we don't bluff our FDs, our busted FDs.
Yeah.
But you are definitely bluffing.
Yep.
With bottom of range, which is where you are.
Yes. Oh, and look at, and it's, it, it, the busted flushes do it, it's just not the jack ten busted flush, look at that.
Yeah, yeah, that's interesting, I can't explain.
Yeah, that's, I mean, the jack nine does it, and the jack ten doesn't, so.
Yeah, so I just, I mean.
Yep.
Yeah, my argument is that if you're gonna start to buff, you gotta thought through.
Yeah.
But it's easy for me to say, right, cause I'm on a solver.
Yep, and that is a polarized range right there in the purple.
Yeah, I think it's polarized because of the flush, and you have a little bit more flushes.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, I'll pass this back to you, sir.
Yeah. Let's put a little note on. On. That seat.
Uh, so I made a good point in chat, is that. Your queen jack.
Mm-hmm.
Are your jack ten is blocking the folds that we want him to have.
Blocking queen ten and queen jack.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, there we go. Alright. Ace, king, raise and take it. Jack five suited, raise and take it. Ace six fold, ace five raise and take it. Ace three suited raise, maybe get a call from the king ten, maybe not. Nope. King four suited will probably not raise, but he certainly can. In the hijack, maybe? Maybe king four, maybe king five suited, there.
King five for sure.
Yeah, let's see where that, let's see what, let's see what the, uh.
That's just close.
What these guys do, this is, we're in the hi, this was hijack. King four slivers in the cutoff. Oh, sorry. Hold this, there we go. Hi, hijack, king four slivers cutoff, has to do it. Okay. And he is in the hijack, and he chooses not to do it, and that's fine. Fold to the queen do suited, and queen do suited should raise and take it. And the raises of three, not two point five, that is just one thing to notice. If you're using GTO ranges out there, either the two point five, or the, or the mixing, the two and the two point two and all like that. When you get to the small blind, it still pushes up to three. Maybe three point five, I don't know.
Six, five, four, not just a call in it, yeah.
Alright, there's a three, six, five calls, defends. And.
Flots the bet.
How bad is this gonna be for me?
Doubt you have nothing.
Not bad, alright. A non butchered hand. Uh, sixes should raise, and it should not get through. Right, there's the re-raise, and sixes. Um, sixes are, I'm, I'm gonna call sixes a hundred percent of the time here, but I believe that it actually does mix some folds. In that, and like, the sixes, seven eights mix some folds, and the fours and fives, like always call or something like that.
Yeah, probably not for this size, either this side should call, this is a small.
Yeah, it's a smaller size.
Yeah. So let's see, so we were button.
I fold too much.
Button raises. And there's the button raising my little sixes, a hundred percent of the time, of course.
Yeah, so I think in solver, it's gonna call. At a higher, it's gonna call those pairs because. Big blind's three betting range against button should be very polarized.
Right.
So he's got, in solver land, he's got a lot of junk in his three betting range, which. Probably the rest of the world doesn't find.
Right, but look at these folds. Look at this world of folds here.
Make, make it a smaller three bet under your sim, and those will go up.
Yeah, no, right, then, then I'm gonna call it, right. Yeah, um, where, oh, you're blocking, I, I was wondering why I couldn't see, see the twos. Because of this. Can I move you over, you? Very annoying. Thing. Nope, you can't get this off the screen. This is the, the zoom window is blocking things, but anyway. Yeah, um, the sixes mix, and you drop him down to ten big blinds, and the sixes become an easy call.
Yep.
Yep, I'm fine with that. And I, but I was wrong about this, it's, it's pure linear, there's not, there's not a dip here based on like. That he raises the tens, but doesn't raise the nines and things like that, and it's just simply. Linear there, but this one we're gonna call, and. We're going to lose the hand. Uh, in, in order that's gonna cost us money. He bets the five, we have the six of diamonds, we haven't lost enough money yet, that's my belief. The three. He bets again, and now.
Look at this interesting size.
Yeah.
Gosh.
He might get, he might win it now, yep, he does.
I don't think, well, I mean, I might be influenced, but.
Yeah.
I think, I think you gotta call this, this ridiculous size. I mean, he's now gone small, small.
Yeah, it's a weird size in that. In that the king's gotta not, the, the king can't be trying to, to, to price in a flush draw, right?
Yeah, this is, this is, uh, this is just a.
Yeah.
I mean, the sizing is just, I think, just giving you generally pot odds to call with what you have.
Yeah.
Uh, it could be obviously influenced by seeing these cards face up, but I think I call those size.
I think that that's, I, I think if, looking, looking at it. With not solver logic, but with the way most people think. That size, it doesn't make sense for a value hand.
I should at least think about it, uh, at, at that spot, out of four.
Right, problem is, that that size does make sense for an ace seven. That size does make sense for pocket eights and nines and tens and jacks.
Fair enough, yeah, you got a good point.
Yeah.
They can also check.
Yeah, yeah, all of that.
I mean, I think you can base it a lot on the quality of. The opponent.
Yeah.
Because. I mean, a good opponent's gonna have a. Polarized three betting range against button.
Yeah.
With a lot of trash. Uh, our less sophisticated opponent's gonna have a more linear three betting range.
Yeah. And he's got. You know, we have thirteen hands on him, and he's played completely reasonably.
Yeah, he's played very well, he's twenty-three, twenty-three.
Yeah, and he's only C bet fifty percent of them, he's not, he's not a hundred percent C better. On his two, two chances to C bet, so. That's what happened, but we are rewarded in the next hand. With a raise and take.
Hard traffic.
Ace, jack, ra, raise and ca, raise and get, and get called. Alright.
This is interesting here.
Right, so, uh, this looks like a very good check range board for villain. Uh, looking at the board. This is a bet large board for imposition. Uh, because it's two Broadway cards, we like that. There's no locked up equity, we like that. And the flush draw and the straight draw available. Make it a highly dynamic board, and we bet larger against dynamic boards, so I think we bet large in general. Our hand. Is a very good candidate for putting in our checking range. With the ace of clubs. It makes it great for, it, the ace of clubs pushes us in both directions, we don't mind checking with ace of clubs, and we don't mind betting with it. So. With all that said. If you're gonna check ever here, this seems like a good hand to check. Great. Now he bets four, and we are very happy, just call, this is easy. There's no reason to bluff this, now. We have tons of showdown value. Great. And he doesn't follow through on his bluff.
Yeah, that three's really bad.
When he doesn't follow through. Do we bet for thin value? Well, we get, we beat all the other jacks.
You're blocking it, well, we're not blocking us with a fair board.
I think that this is a good, I think this is a good, uh. Good value can, good half pop value candidate.
I disagree, and when he goes big like that on the turn, you know, I mean, you're just gonna get on yourself against all of his queens.
Okay.
And he sets, well, I guess he wouldn't. Go big with his set on the three of clubs, but I just feel like you're just gonna own yourself. I would, I would check back.
Okay. And it goes. I wanna solver this one, this one's, this one's a good one for solver.
Yeah, I'd like to see it too, cause if it is a good value bet, I'm definitely missing it.
Yeah.
Alright. But once you guys go ahead, move forward in life, and I will set this up.
Okay, well, you set that up, I'm just gonna remind you of one thing about the value owning thing. When you're betting for thin value, if you, if you aren't. Sometimes, not in the majority of the time, but if you're not, you know. Reasonably often getting called by a better hand. You're betting, you're not betting thin enough for value.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I love that. The only thing that takes me away from it is his big bet on the turn. That he's polarizing, right? So he's not doing that with. With Jack nine or, you know.
Right.
I just feel like he's either got top pair or better or or bluff.
Right, or bluff and and you get no money from the bluff. Yep.
Alright, Queen Jack seven, you guys want to take a look?
Jack of clubs. Can you do it with the clubs?
I gotta screenshot.
Alright, let me get out of here. Yep, we're ready.
Alright, so. Here is. Our strat.
Yep.
Um, let's.
We believe that.
Let's see. Yeah, so this, they're gonna run tight because these are water ranges, right?
Mm hmm.
484 combos versus 300.
Yeah.
But but does have a slight lead across the entire range.
Yep.
Potential raise on the, on the turn, but.
But Button technically has the range advantage and the nut advantage, not a huge nut advantage, and that's why I, I think that the Button's range is going to have a lot of big bets in it. And.
I was not sure, and you are correct, sir. I was saying, no, this is not, in my head, I was saying. No, this is not a big bet. You were spot on, Scotty. I need to go first to solver school.
Learning.
That's what we're here for. So.
Look at it, look at how big it is.
Should be back to grade one solver school.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he, um, he's betting across, I assume this is gonna be cross. It's all range, he's betting that, yeah.
Right.
There are some small bets sometimes.
No, he's.
There's always some small bets, brother.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, so. What size did he choose in game?
He chose to check it back with his ace jack and he was not wrong. Let's look at that ace jack specifically. Ace jack has got checks across the entire range and when you've got the ace of clubs. It.
Gonna do it more, right?
You can do whatever the heck.
It doesn't really affect it too much.
Yeah, so I, so I get, I think the argument is that you need less protection.
Yeah.
So that, so you can size down when you're drawing to the nuts back door. Uh, which is what we see here.
Yep, and one, the one, that's the most. Is the. Spade, was it, uh, spade club?
Sorry.
Yeah, just, just looking at a little bit of this.
Uh, so he's betting the most with the jack, it looks like.
With the jack of clubs.
Polarizing more. Without any backdoors.
If they're not diamonds.
With a non diamond, right? We'd like him to have the diamonds for continuous. We want it.
Um, and then, uh, let's see what is.
While you move on, I just wanna say one thing. The first level takeaway from this with the ace jack. Is that with second pair and and completely ignoring your suits, you know that you can check. All those are fine checks and you can also bet them. And the difference of the suits is small. You're not wrong. To, to not know how the suits drive that hand. Cause the differences are small.
Agreed. That makes sense. It's also interesting here that all hit, so is. These over pairs are betting at the same frequency as his flop nuts. So, um, yeah, I guess because he's betting range here, right?
Every, not every.
I didn't, I didn't really say that right. He's betting. He has a betting frequency across. All hands. And all equity, except there's interesting middle area. Where he's got.
Eight, nines, tens. Yeah.
And Jack X.
Some of the Jack X, yeah.
Um, but yeah, and then he's pulling a lot from. Like. This total crap, this is, yeah, King five's got a backdoor, two backdoors.
He's got an ace three in there. That didn't even have, that, that was barely.
And we can kinda see it here too, right? Look at how linear this betting frequency does is.
Yeah.
And gets worse.
Yep.
And then you bet.
With the suited already. So he checks.
He checks. Completely reasonable.
And just three of clubs, right?
Three of clubs.
And.
Nine, ten of spades. Bet's out.
He goes up pure.
Yeah.
He found this, right?
Right, he's got spades, he's suited.
Ah, they're not in my range.
Yeah, so there he is and he bets out and his principal sizes is is right, you know.
There's no principal side.
So he bet. So B75 is, or B125.
Yeah.
So what did he bet in game?
He bet the 75. I'm almost sure, at four into 5.6 too, yep. He bet the 75.
Not to go too much in the round hole. I'm just curious what his worst bluff saw. So.
Odds.
Six, four. Gut shot.
That's a gut shot, though.
No, they, they get worse.
Um, so he bets, he, I'm sorry, what size did he use? He 75, you said?
He 75ed it.
So what is our ace jack do? Ace jack is. Whenever imposition raising on this board. Which is interesting, I guess, you know, it's uncommon anyway, but.
And every calls, right? You don't need. Every.
Big bits are we down trash?
I'm sorry, didn't hear you, Scotty, say it again.
Oh, I just had every ace jack calls. We don't need the ace of clubs to call.
Yeah, let's go look at breakdown real quick and see if we pulled out any second pair. So second pair, which is gonna be jacks. So obviously. Second pair of jacks. So King Jack's got higher, oh, it's got the king of clubs, that's why it's got. So our worst, our worst. Um, are. This is got, I'm, I'm blocked. It's like our Jack nines.
Yeah, you block.
Our very worst jacks are beginning to. Are indifferent.
Yeah.
To this size.
You block it. Bluffs.
What if he overbets? Let's see what happens to those. Let's see how it's the second pair. Not going too far into the rabbit hole here, but. So second pair now is, yeah, it's falling.
Good, yeah.
It's falling higher up and it's.
Yeah.
Okay, so B75. Button calls.
Then the three pairs with the three of. Spades. And this is our.
So the question is, does he go for it with his busted OESD?
He gives up a lot.
Gives up a lot.
Yep. He bet, you know. He bets his flush, of course. And he gives up a lot of them. And when he bets.
I guess this card all of a sudden brings in. So it could be bussing into a flush and also this card brings in. Both, so maybe that's why he.
Yeah.
Gives up.
Right.
Let's go to breakdown and see what's going on here.
The nine is indifferent, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, it's not the bottom of range, because it's very, I mean, so he is. Obviously, the very bottom of range, he's. He's bluffing with and he's choosing. A B77, so like a B77 is your bluff size here.
Right.
Some bigger sizes mixed in with this. Total five high, five high, five high.
Yeah.
Everything that's wasn't then.
But I think the main takeaway here is that after he chooses to this. Avenue of violence. He's gonna follow through with this, with this card.
Yep.
And I. Maybe it has to do with the fact that now. His flushes, which he's going to lead with. I'm sorry, sets that he's gonna lead with. Now beat flushes, maybe? I don't know.
Yep.
Um, I guess the, the big takeaway for me on this river is that. There's a high, um. Continuous.
Right. Now let's look and see, does he have any jacks that got here in this line? He's got the Jack 10, um, or no, those aren't all flushes, right? Like, take a look at that Jack seven. There, those, the Jack seven suited, the Jack six, those, are they all, they're not all flushes. The Jacks, Jack seven is two pair, sorry.
Yeah, I saw you a few.
Jack six, his Jack six there. So he's got some jacks, he, um, offsuit jacks, he's got a, he's got. No King Jack, yeah, so.
But he also has almost no queens.
Yeah. Yep.
Flush. You, uh, you know. With his 10, 9, he does get to a certain frequency blocking the FD. But not with the nine clubs, only with the 10 clubs.
Yeah, and again, he's got, yeah, and he's got the 10, 9 of spades, which is a almost never.
Um, and anything else you guys wanna see here?
Yeah, I wanna see when he checks.
What happens?
I want to see the check.
We wanna see what really happened.
So he checked, he checked in game, right?
Right, and now.
Oh, we wanna know where we value. Where, how. So, so, I mean, so the other way to do this, which CG is, you just go here. And you go second pair and we do not value back.
No, none of it. None of it.
Which is a lot simpler. I mean, this is an option in the way if you want to just.
Yep, that's good.
Top pair. You can see here, top pair is very linear in depending on kicker.
Yep.
Kicking it down and it's.
Top pair gone, over pair. Betting pure. And then what about our no made hand? Where's, where are our buffs coming from? Do you guys think it's more effective to look at ranges on using this filter? Or do you think it's more effective to use, we're just looking at the break?
No, I think, I think this filter is great.
Okay.
Much easier for me.
This is super cool and it just tells you if you've got no, and you bluff.
Yeah, so he is actually bluffing his 10, 9 suited, right? His 10, 9 off. And he gets checked to with his capped range.
Yeah. That is.
Alright, you guys are gonna tear me with the breakdown. Entirely, but I'll use this more.
I like that.
Uh, okay, so here we go, here we go. And yeah, so the big question though is here, right?
Yep, answer is no.
We do not value that with our second pair.
Nope.
On this wet board.
Yeah.
I think the texture of this board is just too wet.
Right.
Let's make this a bluff and sit, let's make this. For shits and giggles. Let's make this the two hearts.
Use of spades or hearts.
Now what happens to second pair? Begins to sneak in.
Yeah, look at that.
Now let's take the flush away. And then we'll call it.
Which ace jack is it? Is it the ace jack with the ace of clubs?
You shut up, nobody asked you.
Uh, so now, when we have no flush available and no, um. Vote available. All of a sudden. We are, um. Value betting at the very top of our second pair.
Right now, change the, uh, three of spades back to the club. But make it the brick, make it the brick to a hearts, leave it that, and let's see which ace jack bets. Whether it's with the ace of clubs or not.
Okay.
Ace of clubs, come on, ace of clubs.
Mike, this was your question, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is good, this is a good point. We are value betting if we're blocking the flush.
Yeah. But not when the board pairs, that's, that was, that was too much.
Yeah, yeah, with the board pairing, that's just, yeah.
Alright.
Too much pieces, um, do you guys have any other questions? Mike, this was your question, right?
No.
Well, yeah, Scotty and I had, were wondering about the value betting of ace jack and then now, now we've kinda. Seen a couple variables on when to do it.
Okay, are you guys cool?
We're cool. Mike was absolutely 100% right and my heart was in the right place. Because if it was, if the three doesn't pair, this combo can bet. But. I was wrong and Mike was right. And that's why I'm rewarded with an ace 10. Let's raise and play against the queen jack suited. Um, queen jack suited, three betting? From the big blind ever? Sure. Against the hijack, I think there's some.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't know. I think against the hijack and lowjack, I don't think so.
The queen jack suited in at 100 pick points is a weird hand.
Look at it.
A little bit.
There. Alright, that's the, uh, that's against, okay, against the lowjack, it is. Look at it.
Gets in there.
It's got some. And against the. Cut off. Should have more. Yeah. No, against the cutoff, it stops because it, because it, it starts piling these in.
By the way, is this villain five, our red liner with the underpair blocks before?
This is.
Alright, we'll see how, it's the same guy.
What he does to us. It's not going to add.
So he's not gonna be able to do much here. This just smashes.
Check. Alright, this is, this is a big bet board for me.
Yep.
Yeah, he should be 75.
I will be. Yeah.
You can put this one in your checking range though, I bet.
Okay. This one's worth looking at to see whether, when we big bet on this board, however, when, with, how many of them are overbets and if this one ever goes into the checking range, that's worth seeing. But this is not wrong and we win it and he, we deny him equity. That he actually had. So happy, happy, joy, joy. Let's take a look at this board.
Alright, you guys continue on, I'll finally.
Another hand?
Okay, I'll finally do, do your bidding in a bit.
Alright, thank you. Alright. Um. Fold to me. Look at these, look at these people playing well. In general. Even the mistakes are not, are, are reasonable. Except for that one, it was one terrible thing, but I don't remember. Oh, yeah, that, the.
Sixes, the check raise with the sixes?
No, that wasn't terrible. It was the wrong one to do it, but. No, there was a, there was a limp with fives against the, that prod in the nine. That was this guy, one of them left, okay. Ace queen should raise, but not take it. Come on, nine, seven defend. There he goes. Alright. This is.
A beautiful XR spot.
Yeah, check.
Nice.
That's big. Let's see, does he go for the check raise?
He should have less XR's against this size.
Yeah, don't fold.
Might not be good, he could finds it.
He finds it and it works. There we go. Alright, you ready?
Yeah.
Alright.
So.
Let's unshare me.
My prediction is ace 10 starts to where you start to see less, less betting. And a lot of big bets, 75%. Maybe even a little overbetting, but ace 10 starts where you start to mix and check is my guess.
Okay. I agree with you.
So we got the.
And I don't know about the. What, what we're protecting with.
We got two tone board, so the question is. Um, what are UTG sizing is here for our C bet? Let's just, yeah, so. We just dominate with this ace king?
Yeah.
Against big line range, right? We got. We got everything, we got all the, we got all the sets. Got all the two pair. We're loving life, so check.
And so our bets are gonna be frequently enlarged. And there they are, every hand bets.
Yeah, so we're betting across the entire.
Range.
That sizing options. And we're betting across.
The most common sizing is the 75. The 125 is in there a fair amount. The 50. You know, so it's concentrated in the 50 and the 75. But you could, I could, you can overbet it. The ace, specifically the ace 10 can do whatever you want with it. Every size is low, is represented.
Now should we answer Scotty's age old question?
Yes, we should, but before you do that, let me take a picture of it. So we don't have to remember this. Are you, okay, there it is. Okay.
You got it?
I got it.
You know, we can look at, um. Aggregates and, and really drill down on that if you want to.
Not now, we, we're just, we're just doing that, we're, we're doing the, do we disconfirm? Cause it, it, the rule is more complicated, so we're just. I mean, today, not today. But let's just check this one. Alright, now what did it do? It changed to.
Increased the overbets.
Right, so when it's offsuit. Okay, first of all, the check. Offsuit checks, oh, this one, offsuit checks less, we know that. So we were checking 27% in the suited one and we're only checking 21% in the offsuit. That makes sense. And of those. The small bet is it. The offsuit one. Has much small, has the smaller bets at a much higher frequency. Yep, this, this fits the, this fits in with the flush draw pushes your bet size up and your bet frequency down.
So in other words, we polarize more on a flush, on a two tone board.
Except wait a minute, look at that.
Yeah.
No, look, no, I'm wrong. Wait a minute. This is not what I thought. The small bet goes away. In the two tone board. But you've got, but the 125 is all over. The. The rainbow board.
Yeah, I mean, you can see it here. You've got a three favorite tab. Yeah, we're going all the way down to the very bottom of range to find our overbets.
Yeah. We have.
And notice with our aces and kings, we don't. We just don't. Have big bets.
Yeah, what happens is the. The. In the, in the rainbow board. We have a fit, we have a, a fair amount of small betting. You know, 30% small betting. In the flush draw board, we have 18% small betting, but. Those middle, the middle ones. The 75 gets pushed into the 6.9. Cause we have half the 75s.
So we polarize more.
We polarize more.
No, we polarize, we polarize harder. On the rainbow board. Our polar, our polar lobes are bigger. They're not a. The, the.
Well, let's look, let's just do this real quick. So let's visualize it. Here we are. On a rainbow board. I don't know if this is gonna help us at all, but we'll try. This allows us to visualize an entire range. And, yeah, I mean, my visualization takeaway is that. We're less polarized, right? We have less big bets. Across the range.
Yeah.
Right here, and we go back. And look how much these big sizings.
Just sizes come in.
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright, pass, pass it back to you.
We do not have a heuristic on, so the answer is we do not have a good heuristic on flush draw boards. It, it, it's, it's. It's not consistent. We're finding too many exceptions.
Yeah, I mean, I really think that the way to dive into that is to. Use aggregate reports and understand what the.
Yeah.
What are we, I mean, and then you put filters in and then we see what the entire range is doing, right? All, all flops.
Yeah.
But we can do that another day.
Yes. Okay. Here we go. Good for that guy. Well done, that guy. Alright. Um, ace eight raise and take it. Ace jack suited lose some money.
Let's see what our, um. Red line.
Alright, here we go. He raises. I three bet him. Saving the ace nine suited some money. He four bets me. I'm suited.
So that is a red line. I think this is not a, I think it's still call.
Yeah, in position call here.
Hmm. For me, I am gonna call it. Well, how big blinds do I have left? Eighty-three. That's how many he's getting. Bet's five, I call. Oh no! This is we go bet seven, I raise him and he gets out of it. Okay.
What, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be a jerk and say. I don't think you need a raise on.
I think, right.
I was gonna say the same thing.
You're right. You're absolutely right.
I mean.
Certainly not to that size.
With that, I should say, I really appreciate you putting your hand histories up. No one else is having their. Hand histories combed over by the fine tooth comb.
Yep.
Fine tooth comb, but yeah, I think, I think that hero has reason to fold like this.
Yeah, I made it so easy on him. So easy. Now, if I don't, in this particular case, he bets it out, I call. Or I min click it, but I, I call. He's shut down. He doesn't need to put more money in on the river. Uh. Unless I get very lucky and he hits a queen. That isn't a spade.
Yeah.
I've got one out to make more money. Um, or if he, he's gonna go check on the river, I'm in position. I can make a bet and I can, I can get, I can get a bet. Of maybe, I don't think I'm gonna get a pot sized bet from him.
I mean, and there's also room here to think about exploitative raises. So if you have, let's say the ace. He four bet you, right? So let's say you, so you're not calling a four bet with ace, you're calling a four bet with. Ace. You're not supposed to have, you're, you're not supposed to have any on.
I'm not putting the ace queen off.
Broadway's here. To afford that, okay.
Uh, ace.
I think you maybe can call ace king off. So let's just, so if you had ace king. With the ace of spades and he down bets like this. Think about how effective and your imposition it raises as a seven.
But my ace king usually is the best hand there.
Oh yeah, it's kings on the board. That's stupid.
Yeah.
Um, that's the only example I could think of that you call for that way.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep, this is just. I do this with ace king. I mean, you know, I, ace king offsuit gets here like this. It's such an easy, it's such an easy fold for him. Now.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you might have.
I'm buying and smacking.
As well.
What?
Sorry, what?
Oh, I have a magical card. The ten of clubs is a really good card for me on the river and I don't let it get there. The ten of clubs and the queen of diamonds are good cards for me. Um, but any spade. Kills all my action.
Um, yeah, but. I mean, your, the issue is that you're blocking this.
Yeah, it's just, yeah. Alright.
I mean, you wanna, you might do this with like. Queen jack of spades. Cause you're. Cause you're then getting value from these ace king off with ace of spades.
Yeah. Alright, throw this one, let's throw this one in the solver. And yes, I, I agree with you guys. Even without seeing his hand. That I, there's another street and I'm in position and I can take advantage of that and I don't.
Cut off, it's hijack versus cut off, right?
Hijack versus cut off.
Hijack raises, cut off. Three bets. Hijack. Uh, four bets. You're, you, you call pure.
I did.
And I will hand this, which you guys can sort of check.
Up is, yeah, king of spades, jack of clubs, two of spades. And we'll go on to the next hand and then, then we'll run it.
Alright, you ready? You guys want to do this?
Yeah, let's do it.
Alright.
And I realize that if it wasn't me who made this, we wouldn't be running this hand. We'd be moving on. If this was the villains.
Ah, this is interesting here. Um. So.
So first of all, the ace jack suited is a partial, it can do some folding there.
Yeah, so let's look. So you three bet, we'll look at pre-flop.
Yeah.
His queens, I think are gonna mix. No, his queens are, I was wrong. His queens are either shoving or four betting pure.
Right.
Um.
He goes for the.
Did he use the, did he use the right sizing again?
Yeah, he did.
Okay. He did.
You are calling your suited version pure?
Great.
See how much it's worth out of curiosity? I mean, it's not making a lot, but it's definitely calling.
Right, it's got a little.
That bluff jamming there.
Yeah, it's got some bluff jamming.
Oh, it does as well, Jim. Yeah.
Yeah.
Point. Um. Okay, so flop. Four better is going to range bet.
Mm-hmm.
Including his. Flops set, he's gonna range bet on this. Just, it's just. Yeah, he's just, I mean, we're, okay, so let's compare this to like button versus.
And his bet size, his bet size is very small.
This is like forty-eight combos versus thirty-six combos, right? I mean, some smarter players than me really like to play these kinds of pot because it's much easier to hand read.
Mm-hmm. Which of the six combos do you have?
Yes. So he range bets here. Uh, across his entire range. He is supposed to use a small sizing.
Which he does.
It'd be fifty.
He bets the way down to ten percent.
Yeah, he bets the ten percent size. With his queens.
No, you could do anything he wants with this queen, right?
That's a.
Did he really only bet ten percent?
Yeah, he bet, he bet five into it. He bet twelve.
Yeah, so he's mostly, so he's mostly beat with his queens. So he's going to.
Yeah.
But he's supposed to range bets, so he's supposed to use a ten or twenty-five.
Yeah, so he bets small.
So he bets small. Was a B-ten, right?
B-ten, yeah.
What does your ace jack do? And you have very few raises here. You have a little bit of raise. I don't think it's really anything to speak of. I think it's a call. I mean, I don't think there's any reason to raise here in a four bet pot against what.
Against what.
Populations for that ranges.
Yeah, look at your ace five over there is a ace five of spades. Just, okay, not quite. Much either.
Hmm.
Yeah. Um. It's interesting ace five parts. And diamonds is continuing at a certain, I can say.
Yeah.
Um, so.
I'm not gonna find any of those.
Alright, here's the money, here's the money situation.
Yeah, here's the money.
He bet small and then he, and then nine of spades, right?
Nine of, yep.
So what sizing is he supposed to use here? So he mostly checks, but he, I think we've identified him as, as a, uh, aggressive dude. So he, he's supposed to knock a, what size did he use again? Like a.
Oh yeah, that's right. He did. He continued. He continued small.
He bet, so he bet too small, right? He's not supposed to have that size. He's supposed to.
Yeah.
Mostly check. He's supposed to check his range, including very top of range. Well, very top of range is gonna be ace, king of spades. But you can't have, because the king is there. But he can, he can't have ace queen. I can have your combo.
Yeah.
And that is betting at a higher frequency.
Yeah.
And what about his king of spades? Doesn't have x kings on board, obviously. Top set is shook.
Yep.
He just, I mean, the lesson here is that. He's making exploitative small bet, hoping that you're gonna fold out your shit.
Mm-hmm. Um, hoping that I'll fold out a king and also keeping, keeping my bet, because I can't, I can't raise him. So he's keeping my, uh. He, he's making a block bet there against my king to give him to the ten and to the queen.
Yeah, which isn't really a thing, but we'll give him a B-33. Now, this is the question to the B-33, what do our nut flush draws do? So our, our, I'm sorry, nut flushes do. You just pure, you just slow play them.
I just slow play it. Yeah, it's just, that was just.
So I mean, I would, I don't think we, let's see, so.
Yep.
Now I'm just gonna hammer this up. Yeah, it's, I mean. It's not horrible, but you just.
It's five chips.
Breakdown. So we look at breakdown and so at this point. Yeah, we don't have probably any combos, but.
Yeah.
You might raise the very bottom flushes because. Of protectional problems, but.
Right.
What is your set doing? So this is interesting. So your sets. Weird, it's got like a ranges. It's like to, yeah. That's strategy. Let's go to, yeah, your sets are fast playing here. Your sets jacks are fast playing, probably maybe with the.
They all have, they all.
They're just shoving.
Yeah. Yeah.
What about if, and then we'll leave this, but what about if he chose, he had some B-50s? What are your sets doing now? You're just, your sets are like.
Shoving.
I hope I pair.
Yeah, I hope.
Me quads, here you go.
Yeah.
Alright. Anything else you guys want to see?
Nope. That'll do it. Okay. There we go. And once again, let's watch me misplay this, this part of the hand. There you go. Alright, and so what have we learned from that? Play against me. King seven suited, raise and take it. Queen ten, raise and play against the jack nine suited. Look at these people play right. We do not belong at this table.
Nice tables.
Yeah.
Cause it's too good.
They really are. Okay.
So let's see if this guy pulls off some kind of weird bluffing.
Right. And I mean, he's got, what has he got? He, he, he's, he wraps around the eight sort of. This is, this would be.
Backdoor straight, he's got nothing.
Right, and this guy bets big and we are done. Yep. Yeah, with a ten of spades.
Maybe his, um.
Yeah.
Adorab is kicking in at the beginning of the session, so.
Could be.
I don't like, uh, his continuation bet size there, but.
Too big?
I think so.
Ace middle low.
Ace middle low two-tone.
I think there could be big bets on this board. Ace low, low doesn't have big bets. And doesn't bet continuously, I don't think. Ace middle low? Yeah, let's, um, do you want to look at that or do you want to move on?
Oh, I can move on. I think it's just a, it's probably not, like, you're not losing by making the big bet. I just feel like it's gonna be more of a. Small to medium and even kind of a high check frequency, but.
That'll be a good ag report to look at later. Okay. Um, threes raise, uh, seven nines defend. And. Just. Can check behind, can bet anything, doesn't matter.
Did villain, did the villain five check fold there?
Yeah, just check.
Yeah.
He wanted to take it pre-flop and he wanted to hit a set after that. Okay, raise and take it.
The only five's letting me down, man.
Yeah.
I want, I want some violence.
Alright, here comes, well, he's gonna play the king ten. And he's gonna play it against my nines, which are going to mostly call. But this time I raise. Nines is, I gotta see, I don't know if that's right or not.
I think so. I think you're, I think that's kind of one of those. Either or.
Yeah. Yep, and I got him to fold the king ten, so that's great. That's just great. Okay, this is gonna go badly. At least, queen jack can open here and can also fold. I can mix. King, queen has to open. Five, six suited can call. Ace, ace should be very happy.
He should go like eleven. Yeah, it's a good player.
Did.
Is, uh, is that poker coaching chart saying call five, six on the, in the cutoff?
Let's see.
Cause wizard would.
Wizard has no calls in the cutoff, right?
Yeah.
Alright, let's see, let's, let's see, see where I'm getting my excuse for doing this. Okay. Wizard hijack raises and the cutoff just doesn't have any calls, so it's just.
I think you can mix it in poker coaching.
And poker coaching. Cash games. Hundred big blinds, position cutoff versus a raise. From.
And while you get that up there, I think it's gonna be more like, obviously calling it is not gonna be a huge mistake. I think I will call it if I see really weak players behind me.
Yep, there it is. There's the call. Poker coaching has it as a perfectly fine thing, twenty-two percent. And. That's what happened. And now the king, queen folds correctly and.
Hmm.
If I had just raised and got re-raised, I would call the five, six here. The re-raise would be smaller, but there's two and a half dead blinds in here. He's only got fifty. I need to fold.
Oh yeah, he shorts that.
Again, yeah, I guess it's good, good call. I guess his stack size is.
Yeah. Yep, happy. Alright.
And obviously my good player designation was wrong, but she's playing broken stack.
Oh, he, what was he?
Yeah.
It's the other guy, villain seven. That was different. You, you, you like villain five.
Now, well, I had a crush on villain seven because he used a good squeeze.
Yeah.
But now, now I don't anymore.
Okay, exactly. All respect for him. Alright, um, fold around to this nine, seven suited. Nope. Queen five on the button. Yeah, sure, queen five, I was wrong. That's a, that's totally good. I just didn't see it. And defend. And check call rather than check raise is what I think that the nine, seven should be thinking here with the ace and jack on board.
I think you'd get some check raise because Dylan is opening fifty, uh, forty. Three percent of hands for button.
Yep.
You're gonna have some XR here with any kind of front door draw.
Right, this, this sizing, I think pushes that down.
Agreed. Yeah.
Right. Then get there. And.
Let's see if he dunks it.
Nope, he checks it to give the guy a chance to try to defend his ace. There we go. And now. With the bet and the fold. There we go. It seems fine. Ace queen into ten, ten. That's what's gonna happen. Oh! I, I, I'm gonna get, get out of this cheap. Check, bet, fold, fold. Nope. I said.
Can you go back and just see if you're getting odds to call? I'm curious. Yeah, so, okay, so it's on you.
Yeah.
Look, you're getting exact, so good call, you're getting exactly, but with your back door.
Yeah. My back door, my two overs, sure.
I'll say you're playing against a broken stack, so you can use some assumptions. The big thing is this is a fucking, this is kind of a mercy bluff. This is a.
Yeah. Hmm, there we go. And now. Can I take it away from tens? Alright, let's see. I've got showdown value against all of his draws. He has no draws. His check, check screams of him not having a jack when that seven of clubs comes.
Agreed. Hard to, it's hard to pull a trigger though, because you've got. You're thinking to yourself, I'm blocking his folds and I've got marginal showdown with ace on.
I do have marginal showdown with ace high now. And my, and my kicker no longer helps me. Cause I split with a stupid.
It's a good point.
Yeah.
Oh, get in. That's why we see that red line.
There it is. And that's why we see that. Alright. Ouch. Uh, so, so with that in mind, before we go move on. Uh, that bluff sizing is just wrong, right? Uh, i- if you decide to bluff this, I, you, it had to be twenty-one. I had to bluff it like a, like a real per.
What size did you use?
I bet half pot.
I think you need to go P-seventy-five or pot or.
I bet B-sixty-six is what I did. And that's just. That's just not a thing, right?
I think you need to polarize.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, you want. Your sizing to mimic your value, so you're saying you've got a poke.
Yeah.
And so I think you go pot or over that.
Yeah. Yeah, that was. That was not good. Alright, let's find some bad play now.
Yeah, so Sol is saying B-one-twenty-five. I think that is, it makes sense. Sol is my, um. Logic around our boss mimicking our values, that made sense? Am I full of shit?
Let's look this one up. Oh no, it's through, it's through, right? Never mind.
Okay.
Through, let's just do not. Okay. Here we go. Ace queen should raise and take it.
I was waiting for Sol to tell me in chat, I'm full of shit, but.
Okay.
Still deciding. Alright, so now we're on a nine match, right?
Yeah, here's the beginnings of the bad play. Let's start with that for bad play. Yeah, here's the beginnings of the bad play, let's start with that for bad play. That he's on a thirty-five big blind stack and folds an ace queen, both of those. The king five is openable and he doesn't. And the two seven calls. Welcome to nine-handed. Holy god, all right, um, king five. I don't even know, I don't even know the ranges of, against, against the limps here.
I mean, the, the rule I use is that. This is a good bluffing hand because you're blocking his traps of aces and kings.
Yeah, all right, so do that. And you want that or do you want three and a half, what size do you want to do this with?
Uh, I think I'd go four.
Okay.
But I don't think it is too.
All right. Here we go, the queen jack should open and the nine, seven should defend, and he opens to five. Five, ladies and gentlemen, five. Uh, okay, and the nine, seven chooses not to play against five, and I think that's fine. Do, do we hate, do, do we hate that when he goes to five, do we hate the nine, seven suited folding?
No, I think that's a good play, that's all I can do.
That seems like a reasonable response, all right. Raise to the normal size, take it. Raise to the normal size and don't take it. Uh, the ten, nine is gonna play back, he's gonna play along, I think.
He's not has some.
Yeah, he's got.
I get some bluff through that hand.
I think.
This is too far down.
Hold it. Right, but the ten, nine's gonna call. Which he shouldn't, but he's going to. And if you've got a calling range in the small blind, ten, nine suited is certainly the type of hand that should be in it, I think that's not, I don't think that's crazy, let's see what, uh. The wizard which has one says. Cut off raise. Fold. That was the cutoff. Raising and the small blind, oh, sorry, this button. Cut off raises and the small blind with the ten, nine suited, this is a mistake. Even in, even in poker coaching, even in, uh, GTO wizard land. All right.
The multi-way five, five.
And the four, six came along, I'm just checking.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Right.
Play.
Um. I could call one and lose five more big blinds, I could just get out of the way, which I do. That's fine.
I think generally the meta is that people are playing more honestly multi-way.
Yeah, yeah. Um, this particular multi-way though, the. You know, the. The, the, after it went check, 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 you see some opportunistic stuff, I think.
I agree.
But there we go, you need bet five and everything like that.
That is an interesting hand, so.
Yep, king seven suited should open from that, I don't know what he's going to, and that's, and that's a post, that's a one big blind post with the ace king.
Oh, this is gonna get weird. So what does the post do?
Post opens, raises it, turns it into a raise. And now the fives, I should just call in like that, that's what should happen, just to call. Check, bet, he bets big. On this board, which I think he can bet big on.
So I'm like super suspect because this guy just raised.
Yeah.
Any two. Which obviously points towards a larger part of his range. Um. I'd probably call here just because he's raising his post, which is super rare.
All right, there we go.
See if he continues his, yeah. Oh, nice.
Nice, but it, but it, but it is of no value. Oh!
It is if he busts.
Oh, look at this now. All right. Ace queen posts. Welcome to nine-handed. And he raises. To a not re, to no reason to be raising bigger against his own post. You raise posters, but that's fine, that's what he does, so we'll keep our eye on him and it's just gonna fold, that's fine. All right. Ace five suited could raise, tens need to, ace king should be three betting and we should get out of the way, there's the limp from the ace five.
Now, this is an interesting spot, right, so. What are you guys doing with ten, ten here with TT? I am generally going to isolate because I can call a three bet and. I would not prefer to have this go multi-way.
Yep.
But there is another argument that you can just call here and then set mine, so let's see what ace king does.
The smaller your pocket pair, the more it argues for the calling behind, so like sixes and fives and fours are perfectly.
I agree, I think this is, this is too good not to isolate.
Hands are way up there.
Against his early position.
Yep.
Now, it's gonna be interesting to see. Well, our pot odds don't matter because this ends all about the pot odds.
Yeah, and this guy's ace king is, that sizing is too big, he doesn't need that.
Yeah, that's quite good, I mean, I can understand why he's doing it, what he's thinking is three X M position plus an additional limper.
Mm-hmm.
So he's going eighteen, what size, what size would you use here? I'm not saying the sizing is right, I'm just curious.
Fifteen, straight up fifteen.
Solo, what would you, what size would you use here, I think fifteen is right, I think fifteen maybe.
Yeah, fifteen, sixteen.
Yeah. Okay.
Right, now he's got a, now he's got a. Yeah, he's got to push his overpair advantage.
Right, and he does it with a one-third bet, which is in, which the ten, they're not gonna respect, and then that happens because that's the way poker works. And now the tens can get away correctly.
I'm thinking, he's got the flush straw blocker. I don't mind a check on time, again, I might be influenced by the cards, but. It's his very best ace.
What's he, what's he thinking about what his opponent has, when the opponent raises and can call?
He thinks opponent has got like. Well, I think what he's doing here is that. He is afraid of draws. And he made his hand, so he is denying equity.
Yeah.
I think he's afraid of like. King ten and he's afraid of. Uh. King queen knows blocking it, and so he's just denying it.
Yeah, and i- if he sees what the other guy's got, is if the other guy has a. Flush draw, many of his flush draws have ace, have the ace of spades in them. Because he called the four bet.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, yeah, he's thinking that ace of spades has to call, an ace.
Right.
Like an ace, jack suited has to call, ace jack.
Ace jack suited, kill, he kills that, but it's, it's, it's the, the ace ten and ace queen of spades that he's beating that are going to call him.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind a T-street strap here, but. I just think you're. Falling out too many hands that he beat.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, you're falling out.
You're making it easy on tens and queens.
Yeah, I mean, you wanna keep those in. I mean, you've got your best ace, you wanna keep like ace, nines, well, ace, nine, two, you wanna. Keep like ace ten suited in.
So, yeah, so maybe. Maybe.
And the other thing is that he's only getting called by better, he's only getting called by two pair plus sometimes combo draws gonna call you, but most people are gonna fold out their draws.
I don't think anybody's fold, we're, we're not folding the ace of, ace, ace, anything of spades, we're not folding out our ace five of spades.
No, no, yeah, you're right, that, that part of his. That part of his range, he's gonna get value from, but like.
But, but he's also gonna get all their money by the river.
His ace ten of. Like his ace ten of, I don't know, clubs is. He's made very different, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a mistake.
Yeah, I didn't. Although also when you look at the, when you look at the, um, hold on. When you look at the, the SPR, he's at an SPR of one right now.
Yeah, I mean, a two-street game probably is okay, but.
Yeah, I guess.
I don't think a two-street game is good with his combo because he's got the very best ace, and this guy's got lots of aces that he called the three that way.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think it's an error.
And he's got, he's. He's not making it easy for the other guy to call with a worse hand.
Yeah, he's falling out worse and I'll get called by better.
Yeah. Yep. And here's the ace ten to raise and get defended by the sixes. No spade.
Sixes go after here.
Sixes go after, it's small. There we go. Uh, ace eight raising and taking it, oh! Queen ten there, that is a fold in my, in my world.
Yeah, that's super wide, you've got, you've got a mark.
Yes, and this hand is gonna go somewhere. Check, he should definitely bet his eight, there's locked up equity, so he should bet it small.
Got competing interests here.
Yeah, he doesn't have any interest, he's got, it's.
As, this is like, this is a hand that's got tension, as Jordan from PBC would say.
Yes, it does.
Guy, he wants to protect, he wants to deny equity, but also the hand, I mean, there's locked up equity, so.
Yeah.
There's competing interests.
Right, so he goes for the slightly large bet and folds out. The gut shot in two overs.
Which isn't. Well, let's look at pot, pot odds, it is a pure air, and you can just look at it, right? He's getting twenty-eight percent and he's got thirty-seven percent.
He's got thirty-seven percent against, you know, uh, the kind of hand that he shouldn't be surprised to see.
Yeah, this is, this is.
When he's valid.
All this bad.
Yeah.
But he's playing like someone who is going to flat clean ten off.
Yeah.
In the small blind and he's playing bingo.
Yes. He's playing bingo and he didn't realize how valuable it is to have, uh. Two three-liners that cross in bingo. All right, ace nine, easy raise, everybody folds. Ace queen, easy raise. So he decides to limp it, I think this is for a limp re-raise, I'm hoping. No! This is for a limp call. And he's now gonna lose to villain twelve. Nope, villain twelve doesn't wanna make the move. There we go. Ace deuce suited, raise and take it. So what have we learned today? Play at nine max tables.
Yes, good point.
Yeah. And then this happens. This is a donkable board for the big blind.
Yeah, I'm checking this combo and button.
This is a donkable board, this is a donkable hand, this is even a check raise hand.
Yeah, you've got marginal showdown and this board.
Yeah.
Should be.
And the ace two.
Really good fit.
Checks behind with, with what he's got, that's fine, there's the bet. Pot size. Kind of tough race two to call.
It is, Dylan hates going after it.
It is, he is with his sizing. And now, can he follow through? Nope.
Thing is, I think that his. Choice not to follow through is good because his sizing was heavily filtering.
Yeah.
So when he chooses to, to polarize to that sizing on. Turn, and he gets a call, I think, I think to give up is fine.
Yep. There we go. Although with his seven high, I think it's not.
Okay.
Particular hand, you know, it's just the idea, if you're, if you're going to.
If they're down, yeah, there we go.
Yeah, if you're going to take that, take that bluff. With that hand. Not bad, I, I. I think you have to fire two bullets.
All right, I see your point.
Yeah, because remember, the other guy's gonna call him with ace queen. Doesn't have to be ace deuce. He's gonna call one time, if you're gonna call twice.
Yeah, good point.
All right.
I think it's open nines early position thing.
Yep, nines raise and win. And we're at a full table, king jack.
That's a fold.
King jack can raise here, it's, it doesn't have to, we went one, two, three, four, five, six, no, eight players? Uh.
I think that's a fold.
Mostly a fold.
I think they're sliver, I think it's mostly a fold.
Mostly a fold, yeah, I'm good with that, king eight suited should raise here. Uh, ace nine shouldn't defend, queen ten shouldn't defend, deuce, deuce should. Ace nine does and deuce, deuce now loves it.
Yes.
Okay. Um, who wants to pot the most, I guess the ace nine is in the best position to win it, not anymore. And he bets through four of the pot with his king, sure. And with the two flush draws, yeah. Ace jack raise, fives and tens, he's, he's not gonna take it. Fives call, tens squeeze.
I don't know, forty big blinds, let's see what he does.
Oh, forty.
We could just shove.
Yeah, he squeezes like that.
So guy's kind of pot committed.
Yeah, he is. But I think he doesn't mind being pot committed. He's betting, you know, he's keeping, he's, he's trying to keep things in.
Yeah, fair enough.
Queen raises and takes it. Queen five suited raises and doesn't take it. Queen five suited folds. Uh, raise, good. Ace five is a good raise here in the cutoff. But he doesn't do it, this is the same guy who didn't, uh, take the other opportunity, now queen jack, a hundred percent raise, and ace six suited, a hundred percent play back, and I think, uh. As a call, not as a raise, oh, but he limps. And now the ace six suited.
Got on mark.
Yep. And the ace six suited didn't raise.
Yeah, I think I. It's probably nice selling here with this combo against a button one.
Doesn't bet his top pair.
I mean, it's always kind of nervous, I selling with a combo like this because.
Yeah.
You're always got traps, but I think you generally just need.
A lot of traps from the button.
Yeah, true.
All right, he bets, gets called, now he, he needs to give up. Jack king suited, raise and take it. Nope, king five suited, that's a bit early for king five suited, and that's me. One, two, three, four, five, come on, rescue me poker, rescue me, oh, it's a three big blind raise, so we gotta look in poker coaching charts for this.
They're slivers.
I'm on poker coaching, rescue me.
You're living in the slivers.
Living in the slivers, under the gun. RFI. King five, yes! Living in the slivers, twenty-six percent, and it's, and it's spades, so that's a hundred percent, all right. I regret nothing. And I get king jack suited to fold.
That is super tight.
Yeah, that's, that's some quality play right there. Sevens, open them. King nine suited calls, king, king, three bets.
That's a good sizing.
Yep. And with sevens, I can call, I got plenty of odds for set mining here.
Yeah, I think you call also because the chances of button backjamming are very, very slim.
Right, but I don't close the action, and so in this case I folded.
Yeah, I think you can call there because what's gonna, yeah, this guy's villain eleven is just not gonna backjam enough.
Yeah.
If ever. So.
He adds.
If you think about the pot odds that you're getting against. Well, if you think about the implied odds against two different ranges now.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're in there.
Yeah, and I have position on the most important guy, so I can, so I have good equity realization with my set.
Yeah.
I think you can put that into the poker coaching, uh. Chart.
The new one?
Yeah.
Oh, right, there's a new poker coaching thing, it's not this. It's a different one, let's, let's try that. This is the new poker coaching tools, which is the cash game. Where is it? GTO cash pre-flop charts, is this the new one?
Yep, that's it.
Let's see, and, and I'll, I'll bookmark this one instead, I, I had the old one up there. Yeah, here we go.
I don't think this is the new multi-way charts.
And then you select cash game, multi-way.
Yeah. Multi-way, this is good, okay, we're gonna start playing with this sucker, okay, so, we are. One, two, three, four, okay, so we're, we're truly under the gun. In this one, stack size a hundred.
I think you gotta make, yeah, make a cash eight max.
Cash eight max, stack size a hundred, under the gun, sevens opens, I do it. Button is the call with the king nine suited. Let's see, where, 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 where are you showing me the buttons range, you're not gonna show me the buttons range?
Yeah, click on either fold cutoff or just click in the blue of the button.
Oh, okay, there, thank you, that's how this works, king nine suited is not a call, but knock yourself out. And then it was the small blind who pushed it up to fourteen, a correct size. Big blind folds. And we're back to me with my sevens, um, whatever. Yep.
If you click on it, does it give you EV of anything?
Let's find out. Nope.
No, okay. Yeah, yeah, it's a zero EV call.
Yeah.
I might, I might gamble a little bit with. Suiting with the middle pairs here more than I should.
The worst thing.
And Larry's point about calling there, you're really not worried about the button back raising.
Yeah, it's just not, yeah, his, his back, he, he, he doesn't have secondhand lows in the button. I think if, I think you, you'd have to worry about villain fourteen or villain sixteen. And one of the things I've been seeing, by the way, is I've been seeing villain fourteens and sixteens, this is not in cash, this is in, um. Tournaments, I've seen these guys.
SNGs.
Yeah, sitting goes, I've seen these guys call behind with sixes, sevens, eights, five, six, sevens, eights. Get three bet and then jam on the thing of going, let me flip with your ace, the, the, the three betters always have ace king and let me flip against that.
What's the stack depth?
Thirty, forty. You know, poker, you know, turn.
I don't know, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I, I forget everything I ever learned about SNGs, I played them for a while.
Yeah, okay.
Seems bad to me, but.
Right, I don't think it's a good play. But I've, I've, it's one that I've seen that that's, that, that at that point they go, I'll take the coin flip with the dead money. When, when you fold.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or when you're the three better and then this guy folds, that you're, that that's what you're getting, all right, uh, king five suited, this exists. Oh, this is the one we just did. Oh, this is the one we just did. Okay, there we go. Seven, seven on next hand. There we go. Oh, I have another king. Oh, we're done. We're at the end of the we're at the end of of this sequence. All right. Not not that we can't get more, but it is one oh six now. We can do some, you wanna do some more?
I'll do some more for a while.
Okay.
I'm gonna take a little break, guys. I'll be back.
All right, I'm gonna do that. I'll I'll grab some more hands and then we will. Go to the most recent hands here.
Hey Scotty, you were talking about on the uh Tuesday call.
Yeah.
About how your small blind results, uh like big blinds per one hundred is like twice as bad as your
Yeah, let's see.
results.
Yeah, let's see if that's actually true.
Cause that that's how I'm sitting too, and it's like according to that chart that Larry
Yeah.
had shown, like the small blind result should be about half of the losses that your big blind is.
Okay.
And I'm just saying, I'm, let me see what you got there.
No, I'm not. I it's it it was. Okay, there we go. I'm I lose, I've lost seven thousand dollars from the small blind and thirteen thousand dollars from the big blind, so that's not true. It was true at one point.
So ratio wise, assume I had thirteen thousand there, I would be like negative thirty from the big blind.
Okay, well, let's let's view it in. There's a there's a different way to view this, not by cash. Where is it?
Yeah, BBs per one hundred.
Okay, where is that? By position, we that's what we want.
Go to basic, uh right above, download, like go to your results down there.
You have big blind per hand in the middle.
Oh, it was in there? Yeah, there you go. It's it's in this one too.
Right, here we go. Oh, yeah, BBs per hand.
That's per hand, though. I'm looking for per one hundred. I guess per hand, it doesn't matter. You can see your.
Multiply it by.
See it, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm at I'm at fifteen. Big blinds per hundred from the small blind, and you are at, what are you losing?
Uh, let me go to see here. Um. So big blinds per one hundred.
Why is this only showing six handed?
So per per one, uh, actually, this is chips per one hundred. Where's my big blind? There it is. Big blinds per one hundred. I'm down thirty one per one hundred in the big blind and forty five in the small blind.
Okay, there that's I I that's probably a leak. That seems bad.
Yeah. Totally. Now, it's only two thousand hands, but still it seems to be showing something.
Yeah. Now, why do I only, why do I only have, oh, EP is all the EPs and MP is all the MPs. Okay. I was trying to figure out why I only had six things. In advanced, it's gonna get all the, no? I don't know. I'm trying trying to figure out why I don't have all the positions here, why I only have six. That must be just the way it's set up. I don't. Reports. Let's go. Let's go to a recent. Here's something. To do this, is this a session we just did? Probably not. Here's the beginning of the session. That's a long session. Very long session. Ten twenty nine, I played a bunch. Okay, here we go. Ten twenty nine, starting at one AM. Oh, and then it broke up there. Okay, there we go. Twenty nine. Nice hands. Make sure that doesn't know what we've already seen. Play hands. I don't think we've seen these hands yet. Okay, I'm going to get put on, put a piece of toast and we'll start.
Hey, Solwa.
Yeah. Um, the all-in adjusted uh stat in Poker Tracker four is what can you glean from that? Like if you're positive or negative, is is it the difference? Is it the delta between your actual results and then the all-in adjusted result?
Yes.
It simply accounts for uh well uh it assigns the percentage of the pot you would win according to the pot odds when you go all in.
Yep.
Uh, I don't know that it's particularly helpful.
Yeah, that's what I'm curious about, because I I get that. So for example, you go all in aces versus kings, and let's say you have, I have kings. And I win that pot. I'm gonna see actual results, let's say it's a hundred big blinds, go up a hundred, but my all-in adjusted is only gonna go up twenty.
Is that? Your all-in adjusted is gonna go down.
Okay, because I would have thought I would have had twenty percent of that, right? Because I'm.
Yeah, but you put fifty percent of the pot in, so you were losing.
Okay.
Money, but making the call.
Yeah, that that makes a difference on how I see it. So if your green line is above your gold line or whatever is the adjusted, that means you're running good. And if it's below that, you're kind of, you can say you're running bad, or you have run bad, or whatever that you however you want to describe. Is that correct?
It means you were lucky on the run outs. I mean, there are other forms of luck. Running with kings into aces is also just bad luck.
Yep.
And the satto is the kind that comes with that.
Right, there's lots of lots of ways you can run bad other than.
Yes.
Other than all ins.
Plus, it also doesn't account for, you know, if you were almost all in and then the last two chips were sent in, like if everything happens on the turn, but they but you get left two chips. The all-in adjusted doesn't uh account for that.
Yeah.
But it does say something, you know, just, you know, when when you end up in those situations, if you're, if you're well away from it, you can look at that number and go, that's how I'm playing. I'm playing like my yellow line.
I like my yellow line, but unfortunately I have my.
That graph is absolutely amazing, Scotty. There's some interesting um points within that graph. Like, I'm curious if you like towards the beginning, there's a a different sort of look to it, and then it changes. And I'm wondering if you like.
I can tell you. Yeah, I can.
Took lessons or or got coaching at this point and it changed or.
Yeah, I'll tell you exactly what happened. Let me go, let's go look at that. All right, we'll go to my graph. So here is my cash graph over all time. So this here, this beginning part of it, this is before I met Louis. This is me playing with no help from poker coaching or learning any of the stuff about how you need to be defending wider and not thinking about um ranges as much as thinking about my opponent's hand. So when I was in a pot, I would say, well, if he had a flush draw, he'd want to do it this way, rather than think about the whole range, you know, that sort of limit player logic.
Is this pre-COVID? We're going back to pre-COVID, right?
Uh, probably, yeah. And if you notice, look at my red line. My red line is that I'm just I'm just hanging out reasonably. I'm I'm holding my own when we don't get there, but I've got but I've got the best hand. Then I met Louis and started to learn both to, you know, to be bluffing, to be bluffing three to a, three to a uh straight and three to a flush, which I never did before, ever. And I, you know, crashed and burned. Started learning to do that. You know? And then this uh this crash year, don't know. Don't know if I changed play. This might have been.
Changed sticks?
This might have been going, this might have been, I, this might have been, I've lost the game. Okay, now I've got it. Okay, I got it. Then I went up in stakes. This might be when I went to playing the two hundred game. You know, and started winning and then got beat by those guys and then recently went, okay, I'm not playing the two hundred game anymore. But that's what that's what I bet it is. This is a jump in stakes. This is getting some training that hurt. And that shouldn't surprise you, that you get some training and you get worse.
Yeah, I think that's really common.
Yeah. There was a guy who was a coach. Um, he was wasn't coaching poker, he was coaching um performers. And then and when he started with somebody, the the thing he said was, okay, you gotta understand, the first thing that's gonna happen, you gotta be okay with this, is your show is gonna get worse. Because everybody asks me things you're not good at. Well. Okay. Ace, king, raise and take it. Oh, but why don't you limp the jack six along the way? That's unnecessarily big, but it was a fabulous play against a jack six broken stack. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, I think he's, the issue here is that he's got a good hand. He doesn't need to, doesn't want to deny equity to all these guys.
Right, he doesn't need to do that, but if the jack six is gonna call you, that is the perfect sizing.
Yeah.
All right. He's got a spade. Check, check. Bet one big blind. Of course, why wouldn't you? Now. Our savvy ace king with the ace of spades. I think he's just gonna raise. I just don't see.
I think breathing is fine here.
Yeah. He's just gonna do it and just take it. Yeah.
There's a lot of draws available.
Yeah. Okay. Ace, eight suited, should raise, but that's the jack six guy, right? That was villain twenty six. Yep, so he's gonna limp, we think. Ah, the ace three limps before him, so he's definitely limping. Oh, nope. He squeezes this ace eight.
So I, the one thing I always take away from this is that I need to play more nine.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what we're learning. There we go. Because look at that jack nine on a broken set. Look at that jack nine. Wow. Um, everybody else should fold. The ace three can call if he wants to, and the jack nine should fold. There it goes. All right. Ace four, raise and take it. Don't expect that to happen. Because we have to have an eight, nine limp first.
What are you guys doing with the ace four off here? Are you folding or are doing any ISOs?
I'd fold.
I'm folding it on the theory of would you open it in villain twenty seven's position? If yes, ISO it. If not, fold it. That's.
I've kind of taken that position, that strat, I just, it's sort of two positions.
Mm hmm.
A little bit more aggressive when I say one position.
Okay, well, even then, ace four is a good fold there.
Agreed.
Need ace five. So why not limp? Choose the worst of all possible possibilities. Who wants it? He does.
Right, did we talk about this? The limpers and then boom, pot, right? Seems like such a common.
Super common line, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, the question is, what is your counter? And with your overfold range, are, I almost, you know, what is your counter in the big blind? Maybe we throw in some super wide check raises.
Um. Your counter may be that when you have a hand, he's putting too much money. You may still have to fold out a lot of equity because he's made it so big, and you have no, and you have crap cards. You're in the big blind after not being able to raise pre. So it's gonna work a lot, but when it doesn't, he loses too much money.
Yeah. Yeah, I I'm thinking maybe we, you know, you get, we get as creative with check raises as the solver is when we look at the breakdown. We look at the very bottom of range where it's finding check raises with two back doors.
Mm hmm. Don't know. I mean, the first thing when I'm whenever I'm in the big blind and they limp or make it too small, my answer is how do I exploit them? I exploit them by seeing the flop. And I may not win any money on this hand, but it's that mistake is that I'm not being punished enough in my big blind, rather than you play so bad that I can exploit you from the big blind.
Yeah, fair enough.
Because you're 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 out of position and that's bad. Okay. Limp's the threes, not the fries. Our villain.
Two I'm gonna do here.
Does not limp behind with queen, five suited after doing that other weird limp. I don't.
So I think jack ten is a pure ISO.
Yep, good ISO. The ace ten, I wouldn't do that. Even though it is a bad hand, I'd fold the ace ten to the ISO.
Mm hmm.
Okay, bringing the ace nine in? I wouldn't mind the doing from the button. That's me. Ah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm not getting the odds to call, but I would, I don't hate that. I wouldn't hate that as a call. And now I'm happy I'm not in the hand. Top pair bets huge. He bets the pot into three players when there is locked up equity on the board.
Yeah.
But he does get uh the, he does get a uh gut shot and an overcard to fold. So that's good for him. Mm hmm. Uh, ace nine should raise and ace queen should three bet. But instead, jack ten raises way too early. Five, four. I don't think we need to say anything else about that. Ace nine. Nah. And here. Yes.
Now, what does ace queen do here? I think ace queen has to fold out of position.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
And he does. We've identified our good player. We've identified our bad players. Okay. He just bets strong.
So his sizing is what Jeremiah Williams, knowing they're streaming unfortunately, but this is, I think, the default size for me as well, which is half pot it.
Yeah. Yep.
After an ISO.
Yeah. Yeah, not even thinking about the board necessarily.
Just after an ISO or after a three bet?
Oh, he, this is a three, this, oh, sorry, I thought this was.
It's a three bet. Big three bet. Yeah.
That changes it. Sorry.
King, jack should open.
Here's got, here's got the.
Oh. Look at this, look at this. Come on, ten, nine. How can you not play? Okay. And that's my sizing. Nine. Twelve, thirteen and a half, and I pushed it down to eleven and a half with aces.
Welcome.
Because that's what I wanted to.
Whoa, whoa.
I don't mind the eight, nine, by the way. I don't think the eight, nine here is, he's putting in.
Well, you know, he's pretty close to pot odds, and then you got five odds. I
Yeah.
Got on a full stack. Yeah, I can see that.
Yeah, yeah.
His pot odds are twenty four percent. He's got twenty and then implied odds on top of that. I agree.
Um.
And also, he's um in a different region of the board than you guys are.
Yeah. His two pairs are safe. But not now.
This is interesting.
I don't think he's gonna lose much. And my bet here has got to be at least twelve. Um. I might go a little bigger. No, I went even smaller. I said, I said, I said, you're calling with your diamonds, so I may make you call with worse, and I got called with worse. There's the diamond. Bummer. I'm gonna check behind and wait for a board to pair. Doesn't, not gonna turn it into a bluff, not gonna try to get the jack and diamonds to fold, and I'm just gonna lose all the monies to that player.
Well, that's why the game keeps going.
Right. Yep, and that is uh do we, so the the only, the only questions are here.
Pre-flop sizing.
Right, do we hate the, you know, so the pre-flop sizing is too small, but.
No, I like it. I mean, so you now have got. No, I like it. I mean, so you now have got. I mean, it's not the greatest to take anything multi-way, but.
Yeah.
I like your exploitative, smart, suck, squeeze sucks.
Yeah. I mean, if you told me that I, if you told me that if I bet eleven and a half, I'll get called by both these guys, and if I bet fourteen, I'm gonna get folds from both these guys. I would say, great, let's take the eleven and a half.
Yeah, let's ask you, Mike, what size would you use here? Maybe I'm off base.
You know, I'll take my.
Yeah, I probably would have went the fourteen.
What size are you using here?
They do have shorter stacks, you know, which kind of plays into it too, so.
Yeah.
Whatever pot is. A pot sized raise.
Okay, that makes sense.
I didn't see how much to open, so.
Pot size is nine, twelve, thirteen and a half. And I went eleven and a half.
Yeah, no, I, I would have come larger.
Okay. Yep. Now.
But that's, that's. You're, you're good.
Yeah, from here. I guess that, yeah, I mean, it is, it is a small bet board, even with, you know, my hand maybe.
Yeah, I like your sizing.
Okay, yep, and then, then it just is that, okay. And I'm rewarded with a three deuce after this, so I can relax. Sevens should open. And ace five should fold. But instead, that happens.
I think ace four gets some three bet plus here. Against hijack.
Yeah. With this nonsense. The sevens. The sevens can fold and just avoid this whole problem.
Yeah, it's a tough one. I think that, you know, condensed and. Condensed and, uh, higher three bet, I think. I, I think you have to be deeper to call here to this size.
Yeah. But he does.
What do you guys think? I mean, I'll call here two hundred big blinds, but. I think it, a hundred big blinds effective or less?
I would not call here, I would think about three betting, um. If the player was really aggressive, if this guy was isoling a ton.
Yeah.
Think about three betting, but otherwise I would fold.
Alright. So let's. Where's the? Oh, here it is. Change profile. Okay, so here's what we know about the guy. We've only got five hands on him. And.
Yeah, based on that, I would fold.
Yeah, just fold, okay. Now from that. The ace four suited. Just fold. It's hard to realize your equity with it, but there he goes. Ace five definitely fold, definitely fold. That's just.
And how about the ace six?
Oh, he's calling.
There it is.
All day. Alright. And the ace comes with the deuce. There is no god.
Look at his equity against, in this super multi-repot.
It's only fifty percent. Got two pair and his equity is fifty percent.
Yeah, it shows two things, how much your equity is diluted multi-way, and it shows also the fragility to pair.
Yep. Alright, and he checks it. He checks it.
And that's why, look, paired board, each spot.
Yep. Yep. Alright, the second best hand bets. The best hand call. And then he decides to raise now.
So he may not be realizing his. He got counterfitted. That's the only thing I'm thinking that happened.
He may not be thinking. Alright.
Yes.
Out of the way, and, oh, look at that. Gets the second best hand to fold. Yep, just. Okay, I have no, I have nothing intelligent to say about that hand.
I mean, the one argument for that play is that. You essentially can buy a showdown, but I would never do that multi-way. I might do this, uh. In position. Heads up, but I'm never gonna raise here multi-way. Um, to buy a showdown and go check, check, go river.
Look at how much he spent for the showdown. And given that the other guy called, once it's three-way, he may have gotten his showdown. Or if, or if the guy's willing to bet into two players. He's not good. On the river, after, if ace four bets and he calls here. Ace four is not gonna feel so confident. On that queen. But he did get ace four to fold, so. You know, he did make. Eighteen chips.
Yeah.
Eighteen, no, no, he made twelve chips. Okay, that's what he made. Alright, let's see, um. Eight should just raise and, eight raise and probably take it, but there's our, there's everything going on, there's a limp with queen, king, three.
This guy should shove his eights.
Shove his eights, just shove them. Just shove your eights. What were you waiting for?
Now he's gonna push off his equity because.
Uh, maybe he shoves now, nope. Okay, now he's finally gonna win the pot. There it goes. Okay. Ace eight is too early to open, Jack ten can open and the king, queen. Can three bet him.
I like a three bet.
But instead, ten, five suited raises.
We're in the wild.
Right, meaning the Jack ten should now fold and the king, queen. Should just fold. To that position. To the pre. But, how about this? How about the Jack ten calls? How about the deuce seven? Does the raise? Let's just pause the video for a moment. And relish the difference, and relish. The creative play of nine-handed on ignition. Uh, the king, queen has to fold, everybody's gotta fold. It's gotta work. No, the king, queens has to fold, I mean. There's, I mean, the king, queen can't, the, the king, queen clearly can't call, I mean, that's. Okay. Come on, king, queen, check. Come on, king, queen, check. Alright.
Monsters under the bed there.
Yeah. Maybe, yeah, especially with the queen of diamonds, especially with the queen of diamonds. Um, I think he's trying to get value, but what is he getting value from that, that the guy didn't bet?
He's on a will draw.
I mean, maybe this other guy has queens, maybe the guy has jacks. So yeah, I guess that's it, I guess he gets some value from that, but even then, it's too small, I mean, it's too big. To have them call. Uh, but I guess since they have real outs against him. Alright. Um, let's see, the five eight should raise and the nine six should three bet him. But in reality. Uh. Eight, king eight should open.
But ace two's gonna limp, oh, he raised.
Ace two raises, king eight should fold.
But this is another example, we can look at this guy's V-Pip, so only eight hands and he's fifty percent.
Yeah.
I mean, I remember Matthew Affleck saying that. It doesn't take many hands to get a read on V-Pip, VFR.
Yeah.
And this is, this is a good example.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. And the king eight could. Oh, the king eight jammed. That, that was our pocket eights who wouldn't jam.
Yeah, I guess he thinks this is, uh.
Right.
Oh my lord.
What is going on? What time of day is this? Is that what's going on?
Why am I on ACR?
I know. Why is my blue line what it is? Okay. Nine, six, nine, six, nine, six.
He's like, fuck you guys, I got profit.
Yeah. And this guy's going, fuck you, I have money. Come on. Come on, nine, six, you cannot, you cannot. Do this, okay, there we go.
King eight was like, yeah, I'm coming along.
Alright, and then he just bets all in.
That was bizarre.
Seeing that everything worse will fold and everything better will call.
How long ago was this hand?
Uh. Not too long ago, this is recent.
Like a month or two.
Let's see. View hand details.
Yeah, so. Uh. I watch a lot. Yeah, so that, early November.
Yeah.
He did this, like. Review, he's in Canada, so he can find out tons of sites, including ignition. He came to the conclusion that ignition, he plays two hundred zoom.
Mm-hmm.
Came to the conclusion that ignition is the softest.
Yeah. I was playing two hundred zoom and doing very well, um, and then wasn't doing very well anymore and decided not to play it anymore.
Yeah, this is, uh. This is ridiculous. I might put some money on ignition.
Yeah.
Well, the six max hasn't been looking like this for me anyway.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's what we saw though, that's what we saw. Remember, we, we went through all that six max and went, oh, these guys are playing fine.
Yeah.
Now, granted, it's, it's a limited sample size, but. We have a hypothesis, okay. There we go. And that was, that was that insane hand now. That guy's broke. Um. Jack should raise, ace, king should three bet, ace, queen should get out of the way, and Jack should just call. Jack's raised, and they go to three point five. This is one of the things I have noticed. In, in my reviews is the larger opening sizes are. Um, bigger hands.
Polarized to hamstring?
Yeah, they're linear. Ace, king. You see some big, ace, king, um, maybe, maybe the thought is, you know, I don't wanna have to see a flop with ace, king. Um, Jacks, same thing, aces. And kings, I see it bigger. You know, let's make.
So what size are you guys going if you're in position with ace, king, against this size?
The same thing, eleven, four, you know, just eleven point five.
Yeah, okay. Um, that makes sense.
Yep, he pushes it a little bit more, he goes four X.
He's on a broken stack, he might actually go to a flip here, this is what it's gonna be, flip.
Yeah. Okay, and, and now let's see what the ace queen can do. The ace queen is me, what the fuck? Oh, this is, I don't.
I think you've been at this table and you watched how crazy, I think you watched that. That last hand, right? I think you saw that hand and you're like. These guys have seven deuces.
Villain twenty-six play, villain twenty-six's play. Was, I didn't get to see how bad his play was, you know, I mean, he could have had pocket jacks and gotten away from it, so. And I didn't get to see his deuce seven, that one. So I haven't seen him, what have I seen him do that's so out of line?
Sixty percent. Well, he's sixty, sixty over a hundred hands or something, what is that?
No, five hands.
Yeah, but I got this, I got to see the ace five.
Yeah, so I can understand why we can just exploit it, but.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's, 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 that's how good I am. Oh. And he jams. And I'm not folding to the jam now.
You are, look at, look at, you are priced in here.
I am. Right, and I'm getting the right odds.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. There we go.
Boom.
Oh.
That's how you play poker. Oh, oh. There is no god. There we go, alright. Uh, ace ten. Raise and take it. Which means he'll call. Four, eight, crazy. Um. This six, seven for a half a big, for a half a big blind.
I think you just muck it.
I think you just.
Roll in the buck.
I think you just muck it, yeah, I did, good. And that's too small to do anything. Except that, except to build a pot that you don't wanna build. And get a guy to do that. And he just calls, good for him. And is he gonna bluff twice? No, now he value bets and it's over. Uh, fold around to the button. Who can raise?
So we got a poster here.
Yeah, that's what I think. Around, oh no, it's not.
Guys, let me ask you, so you got a poster.
Yeah.
Around you. What size are you going?
Four and a half.
Four and a half.
That's what I use.
And now, five and a half, except I'm not gonna play it.
Yeah, no, it's hard to play it.
Yeah, no reason to. Alright. They just, nobody wants it. Nobody goes for, oh, here, here's the guy who goes for it in the final, in the final seat. Uh. To get someone to fold to the chop, and he does. He made a couple, made a couple of big blinds with that bet. Cause it was hard for the guy in the middle to call. For a chop. With a, with a guy behind him. Uh, this should fold to the jacks. Oh, wait, I didn't see the eights. I didn't see the eights, they just ran by, yeah, pocket eights raised, they raise extra big.
So, interesting spot here. I think you start calling a lot in the small blind with some of these. Versus these early position raises.
Yeah, it's a weird one, I think that you maybe, taking consideration, he's got a broken stack too. I think, I think the heuristic is that. You. Your range condenses and polarizes, and I think this falls into the polarization.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm happy to three bet this and I'm happy to three bet it to fourteen, fifteen.
And, and also, Mike, yeah, and also out of position, right, so. You, as the three better, want to reduce SPR versus imposition player. Cause that reduces their equity realization advantage, so.
Yep.
I would three bet that.
Yeah, especially against this player who, like you said, has a broken stack and maybe has already shown us some. Pretty questionable stuff, certainly, certainly gonna three bet it, but I think solver likes. Calling some of these.
He's a sixty seven.
I would intuitively just three bet almost all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah. I like the three bet here because I don't see any reason to price the big blind in.
I think three that's too small, I think if you're gonna.
Oh, yeah.
You make this choice, I think that you have to polarize like a boss, you gotta like. Fifteen, sixteen.
I, I mean, here's the one argument that I don't think is good enough for this, which is, what he's succeeded in doing this is he's keeping the other guy in with his full range. And he thinks my jacks do very well against it, but he's making sure the big blind can't come along without a hand. Because he doesn't wanna price the big blind, he doesn't wanna be against two players, so.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, you got a good point, Scotty, maybe you go smaller against a broken stack, I don't know, it's a weird situation.
Yeah.
You got a broken stack. Large RFI, and you're dealing with jacks out of position.
Right, but no, he doesn't have a large RFI, he has a large V-Pip. Sixty seven.
Well, he's, his sizing is large.
Oh, oh, right, yes, yes, absolutely, I was looking at his stats.
Okay.
So he's at the good part, he limps most of what he plays. Um, so he's got something. There you go. And now.
What a shitty slot.
Hope to check it down. And did the eights ever realize that you have to get nines to fold? Yes, they do. Is it too late? No, it is not.
I would mix there, so you're supposed to call. Thirty three percent of the time. You're supposed to be good thirty three percent of the time, man. I would mix and call like especially this check, 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 check line. It doesn't make much sense. Unless he's got twos. And so. I would call here, like, I would. I would mix calls here. I would, I would roll it and I would call like. Sixty percent of the time.
Yeah, I think that you could get shown king queen here. Very easily with this line, but after the check, 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 after that many checks, he goes, you don't have an ace.
Yeah, I would mix. I would, I would roll it. I would roll to call it.
But even then, if you had king queen.
I would roll and call like 30%.
Right. If you had king queen there, would you bet pot size or would you bet half pot and try to get called by jackjack?
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, I mean, it's really good to see his face up because we understand.
Yeah.
He's trying to do it for.
Okay. So ace 10 can raise or fold from that position.
I think it's too early though.
Yeah, that's pretty um. Early, I think.
There's a sliver of it.
Is there?
Yeah, look at it. Watch this. Look at this. Look at my sliver in in uh.
I think there's a couple tips short.
No, 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 no. Look at this.
That's six max.
No, I'm changing. Nine max. Let's just do that one. Okay, let's do the other one so I can. I thought I thought that there was. I thought ace 10 was a sliver. What am I seeing? Hundred big blinds, cash.
I mean, you could try. Opening size, GTO.
Yeah, it's not gonna help me. Nope, I'm.
That's just, it's.
It's too early. Why did I think that that was?
I mean, it's mixing six max.
I know. What is this load? From the bullet. Where did I get this? Cause this is the range I memorized and it is not the right range. What is going on here?
I think it's rate. I think there's the. Poker cruncher take into consideration, right?
This is not poker cruncher. Oh, no, 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 this is, this is, I put this range into poker cruncher to memorize it. And it is not correct. What? Did I, what, what is, where did I get this range from?
So I bet if you, if you put this to chippy V, no rake, you might start seeing an open.
Now, I was nine max. Any and L50.
Yeah, and L50 is gonna tighten everything up. Maybe you should go to N500.
There it is. There it is. For some reason, I, what's the difference between these two? This is simple. Now let's see what what it is. NL50 simple 2.5. This is what I, this is what I, I, this is what I've been memorizing.
Okay.
This range and the difference between the two. Is general and simple. I don't know. How it works.
Yeah, I mean, so.
Simple solutions with fewer bet sizes and reduce complexity. Okay. Anyway, this was, this is, this is the one I knew because I knew that the ace 10 was, you know, um. Eight and a half with some minimal amount. Because that's what, if you care, that's what this white is. This white is um.
Low frequency.
Is a certain low frequency, yeah. And as a matter of fact, it is, does it say? Here, no, I don't have it written in, but it's, it's um. Six to 12%. Is white. Anyway. It's a good fold. So he calls it. And that is the thing, that is the, Yasa is gonna look closely for us, but that's the thing that I have found, which is. The hands where you go, this is cuspy, they limp. You know, it it's not a clear raise or a fold, so therefore they limp it. That they see a limp as halfway between a raise and a fold. All right, with that limp, the seven eight suited can limp behind. Or raise. Uh, the king queen against the raise should definitely play and should play just by calling, I guess, except he's gonna be against two players.
Weird one.
Weird one.
We can see it just by his. Does he? He's in the pot odds to call.
Yeah, he is, but does he? What should he do?
But he's not closing the action.
He's not closing the action. He doesn't know this guy isn't a tricky limper from from upfront. He doesn't have any reason to think he is, but he doesn't. Well, the guy's a V67, so his, his, his range is garbage. And he has to call a king queen. Against the button. He doesn't, you, can he ever raise it? Yeah. That's against the cutoff. He doesn't raise the. This is hard. It's just the cutoff raises. The big blinds, king, queen, he mixes. I think he should maybe be pushed towards the three bet. Because otherwise he's out of position against two players.
Yeah, the other thing to think about is that villain 26, that's looking at stats, he's got 12 hands.
Yeah.
His VP is 67. You have his limp. Frequency here?
Uh, it's the difference between 67 and 42. Oh, no, VP, no, no, that's, that's not as open. I don't have his limping frequency.
Okay, so. I mean, so the one issue, I mean, I like her. Kind of retarded. I guess it's a squeeze here.
Yeah.
But it's a cold four or something. I don't know, cold three.
Yeah.
But.
He's gonna call.
But um. He has to be conscious that ETG should have some portion of traps.
Yeah. So that's what happens. And good for the diamonds. He should bet and it should work.
We go back real quick?
Yeah.
Let's just see what pot odds versus uh every. I think he overfought it. Probably did. Yeah, he could fall.
Oh, the ace 10. Yeah, he's got a straight, he's got a straight draw. He's also ahead. I mean, interesting thing is that that he has the best hand and he still is. Once that fold comes in. He's behind by a little bit.
Yeah, here he's, he's making a big mistake, but.
Yeah.
Knows, I mean, he knows what anybody's ranges are. This is.
Right.
The Wild West.
Yeah.
I can't understand why he faults.
Yeah.
Any diamond king.
Right, if if he gets a straight, it is a diamond version of it, so.
His odds are dirty.
Doesn't know his ace is good. All right. Um ace 10 suited should raise. The king 10 suited. Can three bet him. But he calls, which is not approved by GTO wizard, but is approved by poker coaching. So that doesn't seem bad. Uh, right? For any reason for the king 10 to raise here. I don't think so.
Not to be complicit.
Yeah, just call. I think he can bet here.
This is interesting. So if he bets. Does villain ever get check raises here? Should be a very good check raising spot.
We'll have to run it. This is runnable.
Uh, not G2 wizard.
Uh, GTO wizard, you're right. Okay.
You could make him the button. King 10 will call on the button.
Yeah, do you wanna look at the button?
Do that. Yeah, let's, let's make that happen.
All right.
Yep, to see if there's, to see how that check raise goes. And then now villain 30 just has to give up. Cause he bid, he did bet, he got called, villain 30 can't, can't bet out. And he checks behind, which. I'm unsure. Yeah, I will, let's run this one because of that. Because of that uh.
I'm gonna put villain in villain 30, I'm gonna put him in hijack.
Yep, did you take, you did take your photo?
Yes.
Okay, while you're setting that up, we'll do one more hand. Maybe this will be our last hand. No, but it won't, because I have an eight three. Okay. Ten jack raises, getting ace 10 to fold, which is totally reasonable. Ace king needs to three bet him. But he calls instead, bringing nine seven suited in. At which dilutes his equity by how much? Doesn't.
I am shocked by this strat.
All right, you ready to see it?
Yeah, you got, yeah, uh, I'll share with you guys.
Okay, sure.
I'm going to assume the turn he needs to like keep going with his met flush.
Let me ask you guys. Let me see if you guys are paying attention. I'm just trying to get someone to uh join. Um, what do you think the checking frequency is here?
Well, on which part?
Out of position on that flop that we saw.
Can you share?
It was, yeah, let me, let me, I'll just to remind everybody of what it was. It was this hand. It was this hand here. Ace 10 raises, gets called. And the question is, how often does he check the turn? And I think.
My question actually is how often does he check the flop?
I'd say almost never. Oh, wait.
I think, I think he checks the flop.
Versus, yeah, out of position, I think it's gonna be.
He could check range on this board.
So.
Let's see, I'd say, yeah. I'm gonna say 70, only 30% checking, like.
You're the closest. I thought it would be heavy check and I was totally wrong versus. A range bet forward, which I found a little shocking and I'll show it to you guys now.
Right, that's interesting.
Instead of. Talking about it, I'll check. Um, so, you guys see it?
Yep, and let's look at one thing. Let's look at the buttons range.
Yeah, that's gonna be what's driving this. So flop, hijack. Ranges. Wanna get it here? Is this all right?
Yeah, so the button. Has a king 10 suited. He three bets some of his king 10 suited, right?
Yeah, he's got it. He's got it at some frequency.
Yeah, he's got it. And.
Strategy.
Right.
He's got it.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, this flop though. I mean, so this flop, this comes down to who has. Yeah, I think this comes down to. Do the trips. Does the button, in this case, have any success, right?
So doesn't. He has no offsuit six at all.
So there are ranges and we go.
He doesn't even have a six.
And he just, yes, some, but it's just like. I don't, I don't know what's, I don't know what's driving this. So let's look equity, I mean. Yeah, I don't know what's driving this, this uh, this strat. If anybody has any. Has any.
A hijack has, okay, a hijack has a huge nut advantage.
Yeah, huge nut, like over pairs, king high, the kings, over pairs, top pairs.
And also he's got so many top pairs, right? So. Pause, oh, so. Top pair.
Twice the top pairs. Satrating his range. More trip.
And then if you look at it visualized, it's probably this, right? It's driving this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And although he has, although he dies when they both miss, so the, the button wins the small game. But. The size of his advantage gives him an overall equity advantage, because the, what is the overall equity comparison between the two?
Uh, 52 versus, yeah, so 52 versus 47.
Yeah, so he's got a, he's an okay equity advantage and a big nut advantage.
And then um, I don't understand ED, but despite has nothing to do with it. Um, I might want to look into that later. Uh, and to me, it's interesting because look how condensed imposition's range is.
Yeah.
He's only got 38 combos versus 250. So I was a little, I was a little surprised.
But that leads us to bet range.
Yeah, I was really, I was really surprised by this. This is something to think about to the future. Um, so what size did he use in game?
He didn't bet, he certainly didn't bet 125, which is.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see what he. I'll tell you in a second.
Okay.
E, bet. As he opened three, he bet half pot.
Okay, cool. So he he found it, he bet half pot, which is fine.
Yep, and he's on ace 10, he's ace 10 offsuit. Yeah.
And then. Villain with his intent, obviously he's gonna call, let's see what all his teams are doing. Filters, top pair.
Mostly calling.
So very linear, right? So we've got a linear, our very best, so the interesting thing here is our traps. So at some frequency, we're gonna trap ace king in position. Uh, let's find out. No, I'm in the wrong place. That's one. Sorry, guys.
Here we go.
I apologize. So top pair. So, yeah, he's mostly. Against. A range of four that, for whatever reason. Favors out of position.
Right now. Yeah, now go to king 10 suited. Actually, click on king 10 suited and let's just see the suit, uh, the suit driving it. Nothing. Suits don't matter. Okay.
So he calls, right? Hijack calls. Now, I was curious on check raises here. Which probably is not a thing because you see that flow. Seven of hearts. Strategy. Now look at this. After we polarize, look at this, now we're going the other way.
Right.
This also must be a somewhat equity shift card at. I see, so strategy, let's see.
Our ace 10 absolutely checks.
Yeah, ace 10 checks.
We're eight, I mean, we, we, we picked up a flush draw there.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I thought we had ace 10 of hearts.
Yeah, we're ace 10 hearts, so this is good. And that's the only one that bets, but it just.
So I am curious about check raising.
Okay.
I bet check. What size, what size the imposition.
That goes six into, it goes seven into 14, so call it 50%.
See what our. Nope, I am incorrect. Uh, well, maybe I'm not. Let's see. Equity buckets, pause draws. I'll show you, get some XRs. So we only have these two and we do get some.
Yep.
We XR at a good frequency, we XR 30% of the time with both these.
Yeah, yeah.
XR less actually, please check, because we. We don't want to generate, we don't need generate, or it's especially.
Hey, Larry.
Yes.
Can you um have us see bet the flop? Like whatever our standard. Most frequent size is.
Okay.
Likes. Either 50 or 75.
Oh, I made a mistake. Oh, I'm sorry, fall. Now, I'm confused. I'm getting tired, guys. All right, so. Yeah, okay, here. He bet 50.
Yeah.
Add them call, button calls, right? King 10, yep.
Yeah.
And then give us the turn.
Uh, turn was the.
Seven of hearts.
Seven of hearts, right?
Now, I'm assuming we continue. We just kind of keep going, right? Now, it looks like there's. A lot of checking.
This is what we did. We, he did bet, he didn't check the flop. Isn't this, this is what we just looked at, right?
Oh, okay, so the last thing we just kind of ran, we did it.
Yeah, this is what it was. He, he, he bets the ace 10.
Okay.
And now, now he does check most of the time.
So go roll over ace 10 there.
Sure, uh. Where do you want me to, what, what part of the tree?
On the hijack.
Hijack, where he checked, where he checked.
Uh, here?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, he needs to, he needs to keep going. That's what I thought.
Oh, okay, so we were seeing the wrong thing. It was when he checked. Okay, yeah, so he need, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, guys. I think I missed that up. I apologize.
Yeah. That makes sense.
The equity. Let's just, let's look at what our flush draws have been.
That's, that's him, right? Or is that us?
This is out of position on turn after we beat 50, you got called on flop.
Where's our ace side flush? Where's our ace side flush draws? Oh, they're called flush draw nuts. Gotcha, okay.
You're doing combo draws. So. We're mostly, so. I think when you do this, it then tells you what you're doing across this range.
Right.
So here, now it's not full range, it's just the ones that you've highlighted.
Right.
So we're mostly betting.
Mm-hmm.
So let's check like he didn't gain, right?
Yeah.
Check. And what did button imposition on turn do?
He bet um 50%.
And now what do we do with that flush draw?
Right.
And now we go to filters. Flush draw nuts, combo draw, flush draw. And we can get some XR's, but it's a lot less, it's mostly.
Yeah. Very little. The ace queen wants to do it.
I think ace queen wants to, I mean, this is, this is top pair. I think ace queen wants to, I mean, this is, this is top pair and a flush draw, so that's a different story.
Yeah.
Uh, but you're all, I guess the lesson here is that if we do XR here, we're doing it with the very bottom of our flush draw range.
Right. So at the ace ten, we can, we can continue with the ace ten as a bet, but when we check it, we don't check raise it.
Yeah, let's go look at rate breakdown here. Uh, and you can see it better here, right? There's flush draw nuts, these, these, these are not flush draws. Let's forget flush draw. The very worst flush draws are the ones that are checkers and.
Right.
So, all right.
And ace nine, like, what's, what is it about ace nine? Like we skipped ace, jack and ace ten, and then we.
Jumped in at ace nine.
Um.
It blocks the eight, nine.
Yeah.
Does he ever have that?
It's, and also it's just better kicker, right? I think it's, I think it's both those. It's got a better kicker. Which we could see here, right? Ace king is hardly ever XR.
Ace king's also the top pair.
I think it's because big blind is much more likely to call, uh, suited broadway, like king ten, uh, queen ten of hearts, jack ten of hearts than they are ten, nine of hearts.
We're not in the big blind, though. It's, um.
Uh, no, I'm sorry. I meant the button.
A button, yeah. Yeah.
The button has more suited combo, is, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
He has more worse flush draws he can call if you have a nine than if you have a ten.
I see your point. Yeah, that makes sense. Um. Anything else you guys wanna see here?
Yes, when he, when we check, when he bets, we have to call with our ace ten, so we do. And then.
Check, he bets.
Yeah, I wanna see if the king bets river.
And then we call, right?
We call, right? And then the river comes and it is the five of clubs. And we don't, we don't donk our ace ten for any bizarre reason. We don't, our ace.
We don'ts.
We don't the ace jack?
Look at that. Don't our trash hands a lot?
Yeah, look at that, look at that ace, jack dunk. That's the one.
Ace jack, ace nine, ace eight.
Jack ten, yeah, we, we donk a ton.
Don't with our, um, busted FD's here.
Yeah. But the ace ten, we don't.
I'm not firing the stocks. Um.
Okay, so we.
So, big game, what do you do?
On the river, well, he checked. Hijacked. And on the river.
Villain has king ten, right?
Yeah, and shouldn't button bet the river. I think he should.
All right, so, uh, clear, filters. Top pair betting pure.
Yeah. Yeah, he was two, he played that two week.
He's under pairs, are checking back.
Yep.
And then he doesn't have his ace five, I guess. He's got plus there. He's bluffing down this region.
Yeah.
And then he's absolute shit. All right.
Yep. All right, let's.
All right, I'll head back to you guys.
You got it. And now what we will attempt to do to end, and we may not get there, but if we end, we'll see if we, if we can get to one hand that I play. I'd like to point out these hundred and sixty-six big blinds that I have there were not deserved. They're all from that ace queen versus ace king hand. This was not a good session. Was a good result, not a good session. All right.
Gold line.
Yes. Ace, exactly. Ace ten should raise, ace king should three bet him, king jack should fold. But instead the ten jack raises, making the ace king, now the ace king should come over the top, but he doesn't. We've seen this one. What hap, oh, we saw that one. Okay, here we go. King, queen, good. Ace queen should raise. But six, seven raises instead. This is what fifty threes look like. And he just calls it. In position. Right, this should be a fold around to the ace king. And king six is a defend? Is it really?
It might be a three bet bluff.
It's a three bet. It, it mixes, it mixes three. I, I know this one. It mixes three bets and calls. And this, and so this time I did it and it was the wrong time. And that counts as a hand played. All right.
Guys, this is, uh, this is fun. I appreciate it.
Yep, let's look at the king six, see how bad, see how often that is in, in this one and be done. So here we go.
I bet it's, I bet it's like down there with a few of those low king, uh, offsuit kings.
I, I know it in, I know it in poker coaching that it's, it's very common.
Yeah.
But I don't know what these guys do with it. Okay, these guys folded some, this is, this guy folds it some, but mostly raises it when it plays it. And just see how different they are, because I know this one, poker coaching never folds it. It's a zero fold. Uh, we'll, we'll look in the new charts. So we wanna go back to tools. We want the new GTO cash game charts. And now we're gonna do GTO cash, eight max. Yeah, we're in eight max, aren't we? Yeah, not, not eight max. And we're not multi-way. So here we go. So this is a small blind. Here, over here, hundred big blinds. We are versus raise from the small blind. They've changed it. Look at that. So the king six here is a play, but it's against folds, right? Now, just showing you this. This is the old poker coaching chart. It has changed a lot. Hundred big blinds, position, big blind, action versus a raise from the small blind, king six. Hundred percent play, mostly raised. This has really changed this compared to this.
Think that might be rake driven.
Could be. I thought there was rake in this one also, but there we go. We're playing the more modern ones now and the king six was perfectly fine to do it. And I got, it jammed in my face. All right. Let's hit stop recording.